All to order the Lennox Public Schools.
Everybody's back.
School Committee Retreat. Of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And we're gonna have public comment shortly, but before the public comment, I just wanted to uh read a statement. Um before we take public comment, I'd like to address the committee and the community. The last few weeks have been challenging. Fortunately, we've had a superintendent who acted quickly and decisively to carry out investigation that resulted in the voluntary resignation of our recently hired principal. He has very quickly worked to get experienced leadership in place on an interim basis, while beginning the search for a great principal for elementary one jets. Dr. Gosson put the interest in safety of our students first and foremost, as well as the interests of the district. This is what we hired him to do. He protected that safety as well as the rights of the individual throughout the process and followed the advice of our council. He's to be applauded for these actions both now and in the issues last spring. Of necessity, personal matters are confidential in nature. This can be frustrating to committee members who kept out of the loop until resolution, sometimes because the committee might be called on to adjudicate a hearing at some point in the process. It's frustrating to school faculty and staff who only find out upon the resolution, but wonder what's happening along the way. And it's frustrating to parents and the community who may wonder what's going on in their school or get rumors. And their elected officials either don't know or can't comment. However, this is the process essential to protect both the employee as well as to minimize any potential litigation that the district might incur. In any personnel situation like this, our school legal counsel plays a key role. And our legal counsel is Sarah Spatafor, and she's here tonight. Superintendent relies on her advice and her creation of any necessary legal documents. When the press writes about a personnel issue in our schools, they put forth information that we most often can't comment on. We're bound by stricter employee rights and confidentiality. So before we start public comments, it's important to remind you to abide by the policies of the Lennox School Committee regarding public comment and the nature of it. And I just need to see people who are at home. Any hands are raised. So that said, is there any public comment on this issue or any issue coming before the committee tonight? Yeah, and identify yourself and you might want to come a little closer so that the owl can pick you up. Maybe sit in the front, center front.
Okay. So I was gonna write something down and then I ran out of time. Um I'm Elizabeth Legere. And I have three kids in the school system and my concern is just the increase in numbers at the schools. And I just love to learn more. I'd love to learn like what, just more transparency about like the numbers of school choice, which I think school choice is awesome, but I also really loved the class sizes, for example, at Morris that were closer to fifteen students as opposed to now this year where like pushing more towards twenty. Um there hasn't been, to my knowledge, staff hired to make up for the increase in students. Um and I'm just, I just would love to know, and I know I'm not alone in that. Um I know that other families are also talking about this and concerned us to just like, just tell us more, tell us why the numbers have gotten so much bigger. Is this something that's gonna continue? I'd heard there was like a forty fifty percent rule, and I don't know if that's in place anymore. Um I just think any information will be great.
Okay, we are gonna be talking about that later in the meeting, but probably not for a while.
Okay, I'm here for the same. First, you prove.
Okay, did you want to speak?
I I feel the same way in a lot of what she just said. I guess I was taken back this year. My daughter was in kindergarten last year and there were fourteen students. And one of my friends' daughters was in kindergarten nineteen, so I just felt like it was a huge increase also. And was just wondering where numbers came from and how that works also. So I've been kind of trying to get information, but it's hard because you don't always know if you're getting the right information. So I figured this is the best way to get more knowledge on that.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Okay, so that will be addressed later. Um you know, I'm estimating maybe between six thirty and seven, which is obviously a ways away. Um but it might be sooner. Thank you. Um. So I wanted, uh I invited Sarah, our our council from Murphy, Hestune, and Lahane to attend our meeting, to be here for you know, several issues on, but to kind of quickly go through school committee roles and responsibilities. So Sarah, take it away.
Thank you. Um so I do have a little presentation that I'll share my screen and I will also send the PDF copy uh to to the committee so you can see it. Um. Here we go. And let me just start the presentation. Okay, so uh my goal tonight is to go over the role of the school committee. Uh and so we start with any discussion about the role of the school committee with the nineteen ninety-three Education Reform Act, which significantly changed the way schools in Massachusetts are run. Uh it limited before nineteen ninety-three, the school committee had a very active role in the very, the management of the day-to-day operations of school districts. In nineteen ninety-three, the state moved away from that and limited the role of the school committee to really four areas that we'll talk about tonight. Setting educational goals and policy, budget, staffing with in limited circumstances and with limited purposes, and selection and purchase of textbooks and educational materials. That is the probably the easiest topic that we'll talk about. Of course, this is meant only as a guide and it, the guidance is based upon largely an advisory that's issued by D E S I. It is old, I will tell you, but it is still very accurate and very relevant, and the link is there if anyone ever wanted to peruse it. So looking at the D E S I guidance uh with regard to setting educational goals and policy. The way D E S I equates a school committee is essentially the same as a an elected appointed board of directors of a corporation. Uh the school committee has oversight and responsibility for the school system, sets the direction of the system, establishes the criteria to determine if its goals and policies are met. The superintendent's the equivalent of the CEO, right? The superintendent's the educational leader for the school system and provides administrative leadership for the school staff and operational manager uh matters proposing implementing policy changes. The decision to actually uh go forward with the policy change is that of the committee. The day-to-day operation of the school system is the responsibility of the superintendent, together with principals and other administrative team members. Before establishing policy, generally it's advised the school committee should solicit information and recommendations from the superintendent, who's in the best position to advise about whether the the pros and cons of any determined policy. The educational goals and policies of the district are um should be established by the school committee consistent with the law, right? And that's that's outlined by statute. The superintendent is employed by the committee and manages the system consistent with state law. And then the principals are the educational administrators and managers of the school supervised operation and management, work with the school councils, define educational goals, et cetera, right? These are all pieces that are pulled from the various laws we have under chapter seventy-one about how we run school districts in Massachusetts. Now, the line between educational policy, which is a school committee responsibility, and the administrative operations superintendent responsibility is very, can be very difficult to navigate. And it takes, so I've pulled out a couple areas where we can see the clear divide depending on which law you're looking at. School choice law. School committee responsibility, that's laid out by statute that falls within the purview of the school committee. Setting the length of the school day and the school year is a school committee responsibility. This often comes up in bargaining, something we're looking at. Setting the school lunch prices is a school committee responsibility. Adopting general disciplinary policies for students is a school committee responsibility in consultation with the superintendent. Setting detailed rules of student conduct specific to each school delegated to the superintendent, principal, and school council. So you can see there, right? The the broad policy for the district regarding discipline of students goes to the school committee. And then the actual implementation of those rules trickles down to the administrators at each level. Broad system-wide curriculum and school restructuring, school committee responsibility after seeking advice and recommendation of the superintendent. Detailed curriculum decisions, however, such as when subjects are taught, i.e. what grades they're taught in, that's a superintendent principal responsibility. Standards for high school graduation, promotions of students from grade to grade, school committee, right? We're going big picture, small picture. Big picture is always the school committee. Implementation is the superintendent. Establishing report cards and other progress reports is a superintendent principal responsibility. Generally, when we look at this area of school committee responsibility, if we think about what to do, that's the school committee's role. How to do it is administration. Uh and it again, it's not always that cut and dry. Oftentimes, it requires collaboration, communication, transparency. But generally, if you look at any issue that's a policy issue, if you kind of do that what how analysis, that's usually the easiest way to determine whose scope of responsibility does this decision fall into. D E S I, of course, recommends that when the line's not clear, open communication, collaboration is the most effective way to address any um concerns or disagreements about whose responsibility uh this falls within. Uh and this is a quote from the D E S I guidance that school committees are, of course, most effective when advancing education reform, when they focus on strategic direction of the school system and on the educational policies and outcomes rather than managerial responsibilities. Then it's the big picture versus the implementation. Where can policies be found? We, of course, have district policy manuals, strategic plans, district goals, student handbooks, and the budget. So I would say that most of the school committees, right, when we look at the buckets of responsibility, policymaking body isn't one of the biggest areas that a school committee is tasked with. The second biggest area, of course, is budget. Uh as you all know, I'm, I know you spend a lot of time on this every year. The school committee is solely tasked with reviewing and approving the budget for public education in in your town. M A S C provides guidance that no question with regard to money is off limits for the school committee. School committee is is tasked with making sure the budget is fiscally sound and responsive to the district's needs. So of course, if there are questions related to spending, that is completely within the purview of the committee to ask. The committee must hold a public hearing on the proposed annual budget, as you know. And the school committee has the authority to determine expenditures within the total appropriation voted by the city or town. This is often an area we sometimes have some spirited conversations with town governance with about how much of a role the town governance has with regard to how the school committee spends its allocation. And the answer is not much, right? The total allocation is voted up or down by the town, but the they can make non-binding monetary recommendations to increase or decrease certain items, but cannot limit the school committee's authority to determine expenditures within the total appropriation. That's a sole authority of the school committee. School committee may accept grants, gifts for educational purposes from the variety of sources listed there. And of course, the regional school district budgets outlined doesn't apply to you. So budgetary, I think it's a pretty cut and dry process as opposed to policy where there's some areas of gray. Budget, cut and dry, that falls squarely within the purview of the school committee.
Eric, can I ask the question?
Of course.
Well, like, I don't want to interrupt, but I feel like it's a good place.
Better than hearing me talk.
No, no, it's great. Thank you. In the past, there's been conversations too, though, about the overall budget. What is the allocation? How much is the town allocating for Lennox Public Schools budget versus how to manage the line items? So for example, when we have the gross budget, in order to determine what's fiscally responsible, we usually dial into the nitty-gritty of what are we spending on? But am I correct that ultimately the the responsibility for moving from line item to another line item is the responsibility of the superintendent? Is that, and the finance director, is that correct?
The responsibility of of creating the budget and determining what's in each line item, yes, falls to administration. That is subject to the approval of the school committee. So the town doesn't get to decide the line items, but the school committee, if you ever had questions about them or needed to. Moving from money from one item to another line item doesn't necessarily require a vote of the committee, but larger changes expenditures may. It depends on the the level that you're looking at. But if it's within the budgetary appropriation that you've approved as a committee, then yes, there's certain responsibilities that fall to the the superintendent.
And then if I can just backtrack for a second on the issue of you said chapter seventy-one, which of course governs the overall, you know, how we do education, even though you mentioned the four areas that we're responsible for, but that's within the items of what the law says. Uh an obvious example is we set the school schedule, but we have to have a hundred and eighty days of active school, right? So we have some broad discretion about adding days or how we do them, but it has to meet the hundred and eighty.
Correct. Exactly.
Disciplinary, I think that's one where I think people can get confused. So again, to clarify, disciplinary, there is also a whole body of statute about expulsions and about the student's right to an education. I mean, we're not doing that tonight, but there's a whole other body of law that doesn't give us as much discretion as one might think.
Absolutely. That's an excellent point. So uh with student with a lot of things related to how the school year is structured, right? There are some statewide mandates that can't really deviate from. Uh with the school schedule, right, some good examples of that are early release days and things along those lines that the school committee has a bit more discretion on, but you have to meet your time on learning requirements. You have to meet your hundred and eighty days. All those things that the state has laid out are requirements in order for a student to have that year counted towards their education. Similarly, there are some curriculum guidance that you have to meet in order to uh M C A S, things along those lines that you don't have a lot of discretion over. The state takes that out of your control. Where there is discretion in those areas, it does follow the school committee in certain circumstances. But also, you're right, student um student discipline is another area that's heavily regulated. Student record's heavily regulated. We're gonna talk about staff discipline, also a fairly regulated area. So yes, while there, those responsibilities where there are any discretion do follow the school committee, the discretion is pretty limited in quite a lot of those um quite a lot of those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so moving on from budget to staffing. Uh the school committee, this is probably the biggest change of nineteen ninety-three Education Reform, was the role of the school committee with regard to staffing and oversight of that staff. So uh under the current statutory structure, the school committee is responsible for hiring the following personnel in the following positions, asterix, right? Superintendent, a hundred percent. You are required, you are tasked with hiring, evaluating, supervising the superintendent of schools. Assistant slash associate superintendent. You are hiring that role, but it's based on the recommendation of the superintendent. Approval of the recommended candidate cannot be unreasonably withheld. So the role, again, of the school committee is a little bit uh less with regard to the role of the assistant or associate superintendent. School business administrator, uh you are responsible for hiring. This administrator of special education, uh school physicians and registered nurses. That is still within the statute, but generally registered nurses, school nurses fall within um the bargaining unit of your your teachers or similar to the teachers. So while it does say that they, if you were gonna hire somebody to be a registered nurse for the entire district, there's a different standard. Most are assigned to schools, so it doesn't rise to the level of the school committee. Supervisors of attendance, some districts still have these, though I will say that most districts have moved away from this role. Legal counsel, uh you are allowed to have your own legal counsel separate from town council to represent the school committee. Then we move on to the bulk of the staff that are employed by the school, by the school committee. Administrators, principal, and staff not assigned to a particular school, athletic coaches are appointed by the superintendent. There's no role of the school committee in the appointment, supervision, um administration. There is some with setting the salary, which we'll talk about, of any of those administrators. Same with teachers and other school staff. They're generally hired by the principal, subject to approval of the superintendent. Levels of compensation, the school committee can establish levels of compensation for school principals and other administrators and personnel not assigned to particular schools. Uh so you establish what you're willing to pay, and then it's to the superintendent to go out and actually hire uh the principals and other administrators. You are allowed to establish, again, this kind of dovetails nicely with the first section of responsibility. Hiring practices and policies do fall within the purview of the school committee, so you can establish additional qualifications for hire beyond required certifications to the point before the law sets a baseline of requirements for teachers, different administrators within Massachusetts who are working in schools, and you can establish more than that if the committee so desired, uh but not less. The school committee can also establish personnel policies, which which you have, uh which are, so long as they are consistent with laws. There's a whole host of laws dealing with employment in both the public sector and generally. And do not infringe upon the superintendent's and principal's management responsibility with regard to hiring and all things related to hiring, such as super uh supervision and evaluation. So you wouldn't be able to create a a policy that says just kidding, we're not, we are gonna hire all the staff instead of the superintendent. Not that you would want to do that because it's a major responsibility, but you wouldn't be able to do that because it would infringe upon the superintendent and principal managerial responsibility. Performance standards, supervision, and evaluation. Uh the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, does establish performance standards for teachers and other employees in the district, subject to collective bargaining processes. This is another area that's heavily regulated and really the the ability of any school district to modify, change the uh evaluation rubrics that exist in Massachusetts for educators is fairly limited. But it is there, and those of you who are um involved in education about ten years ago, and we did the big overhaul of teacher evaluations, I'm sure remember bargaining over rubrics and uh all the different pieces that came with the new teacher evaluation system. So the school committee is involved in implementing uh those types of supervision and evaluation tools or implementing the broad policy. The actual implementation of them on the employees falls to the principals, superintendent, other administrators. And of course, that's generally subject to collective bargaining. Professional development, the district has an obligation legally to adopt a professional development plan for all staff. And that's updated annually and set forth in the budget for professional development. So it's part of when you approve the budget, you're ensuring that there's sufficient professional development for your staff. Discipline and discharge, uh the school committee's ability to discipline and discharge staff is limited to just the superintendent. Uh the school committee does not have the authority to otherwise discipline or discharge really any other employee of the district. Um they, that is limited to the superintendent, who can discipline or discharge any employee of the school district. Only a superintendent can discharge a principal, uh discipline or dismiss a principal, and the principal uh has the right to dismiss or demote any teacher or other person assigned full-time to his or her school, subject to the approval of the superintendent. So again, this all came as a result of the ed reform, this pulling down of the the day-to-day management supervision of the staff of a school district from the school committee to the administration. Collective bargaining, uh so it's kind of an interesting, I don't think it dovetails as well as we see in some other areas of responsibility for the school committee because while we're saying you do not have the authority to discipline, evaluate, et cetera, anyone other than the superintendent, the law makes the school committee the employer for purposes of collective bargaining. So that means all of your collective bargaining agreements are between you, the school committee, and the union, not between the superintendent and the union. Uh the superintendent effectuates whatever the um deals are within those collective bargaining agreements, but it's the the school committee is technically the employer with regard to collective bargaining agree, collective bargaining generally. The school committee usually will designate a negotiator, a negotiating team when you're headed into contract negotiations. Different committees do different things with regard to who sits at the table, who's involved, how they're involved. I don't think there's any right formula for that. It all really depends on the dynamics of each district. The superintendent, of course, is a major resource during collective bargaining and assures adherence to collective bargaining agreements. Um and just backing up, so that's why when there's grievances, uh if there are ever any or legal actions that stem from collective bargaining, it's the school committee who's on the other side of the V as opposed to the superintendent because your task, your contract, you're tasked with making sure that your staff are adhering to it. So uh it is, it is continues to be the responsibility of the school committee to make sure they're meeting their obligations under collective bargain, even though that does involve quite a bit of uh day-to-day management. The last area, which I'll just touch on very briefly, is the purchase of textbooks and educational materials. Again, does not come up very often, but it does allow the school committee to make some changes uh about the books that are used, but only when there's a significant shift in the educational direction of the district. As a general rule, the school committee does not approve or reject textbooks or other educational materials. It's a pretty minor uh area where that comes up. And so this was just intended as a very brief overview. Um I'm happy to to talk through any questions um that anyone may have about this area, talk through, and we just stop sharing. Uh talk through anything specifically um that you'd like.
Hi, Sarah. It's Bob Munch here.
Hi, Bob.
Uh, talk a little bit about how the budget process dovetails with the ability to hire people. Like, we get to, we have to fund positions to be hired into, right?
Correct. Correct. That's an excellent point. So um for instance, let's say you wanted to expand a certain program at the high school, right? There's a recommendation from the superintendent to start teaching a new foreign language. The school committee, before there could be any positions hired into that, would have to approve those new positions. There would be some collective bargaining attendant responsibilities likely that would arise. And then um it would be tasked to the superintendent, who would task it to the principals, to make sure you go out and hire with, consistent with ever process that may be. The school committee would not have approval of who is hired for those positions, but would have approval of whether or not there is funding for those positions within the budget. So layoff decisions, if the district was ever faced with having to do a reduction in force, uh which hopefully you never are, but if you were, that is a decision of of the school committee to have to determine whether or not their superintendent usually makes a recommendation, and then the school committee evaluates what positions will be eliminated, and then there are some attendant bargaining obligations that come along with that. So yes, you're funding the position, but not selecting the person who does the position.
And I have a follow-up on that. Um um it's, does that, is that also true even if the issue is budget neutral? So for example, we're going to eliminate, well, using your foreign language, you know, we're eliminate one foreign language or reduce the staff and then add another foreign language. And so in the end, we're we're shifting, but it's budget neutral. Does that, do we still have a role in that if it's not changing the budget?
I guess the question there would be if it's massively changing the curriculum. Um so if the district was moving away from offering a certain foreign language, that may be something that the committee would uh have a a voice in, but generally, to your point, I think if you're just shifting money around as opposed to uh fully funding new positions versus other positions, usually there's some conversation, but no, I wouldn't say that that necessarily would be an error. It's part of the approval of the budget. So could there be questions asked by the school committee? Absolutely. But if it's um kind of more into the implementation of the existing curriculum, I guess whether or not the school committee could stop that type of change, it would be a closer question if it is a budget-neutral change.
With with respect to, we've been criticized a lot in the last month um for lack of transparency around the resignation of our high school principal and spring, the resignation of our high school assistant principal. Um. Can you comment on on that process? I mean, because that's what you know, that's what I'm hearing from um some members of the public that we're opaque, that we, you know, that we've lost trust. Um and yet I feel like we've treaded carefully to protect the district. You can comment on that.
Absolutely. So this is always a very challenging area, frankly, for many of you as school committee members, because I'm sure you're met with questions from your constituencies and maybe learning from them things that you may not have learned from administration, right? Because it's a, it's a very delicate process. Um and I generally am pretty involved in most of them, so what we have to balance when we have a personnel situation arise, regardless of what level of the administration it is. If it were ever to deal with the superintendent, you would absolutely be involved because that's the staff member you're tasked with uh supervising. But anyone below that, uh it 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 becomes a very delicate dance of wanting to make sure we're protecting the personnel privacy interests of the individual, right, who have legal rights to making sure that we're not going to uh impede their ability to get a job in the future. We're not letting information that is maybe not verified yet become public. We're we're preserving the integrity of an investigation by making sure information isn't becoming public before it's had an opportunity to be fully vetted. Uh we're often dealing with student record issues uh that we have to be very cognizant of, that none of that becomes public. And then it's trying not to disrupt the orderly operation of the schools, right? Because we know nothing disrupts the orderly operations of the schools than an issue related to staffing or students, student management. So that's all a very, a very delicate balance. And then on top of that, you're dealing with the dynamics of the open meeting law and making sure we're not having communications, deliberations, discussions outside of an open meeting. And staying within the purview of the authority of the, the school committee. You're also balancing the risk that there might be a grievance filed with regard to whatever actions, inactions, investigations, et cetera, are happening. And the school committee is the level three grievance body. So we want to make sure that that integrity of the process is also preserved throughout any, any employment action, personnel action that may be ongoing. It's not unusual that if something does happen, you learn of something either through the press or, or through a third party that's unexpected, that the superintendent will contact the chair to give the chair a, a heads up just in case there is a contact by the press or something becomes public before anyone intends it to become public. So no one's blindsided by that. And then the, the chair can be prepared to respond because generally the paper will call the chair of a committee as opposed to individual committee members for comment. And the chair is limited, of course, in their ability to share information with the full committee without violating the open meeting law. So there's also our ability to try to limit the risks of potential litigation. And, and oftentimes employment issues are able to be resolved through amicable resolution. Nothing ruins the hopes of an amicable resolution than public disclosure of information that could potentially impede somebody's ability to move on from the district. That's, none of this is to say we're trying to hide anything that we shouldn't be hiding. The superintendent is bound by a legal obligation to report to the Department of Education any issues that could jeopardize the moral, I think it's called the moral, forget the exact term, but the ability of a teacher or a public educator, anyone who holds a license in Massachusetts, anything that would cause the superintendent to question that that person may, has the appropriate, in the words moral, aptitude to hold that position, he's obligated by law to report that to the state. So there is no ability for us to push something under the rug or otherwise move along people who could be, you know, not helpful or dangerous to other, other districts. And that's never been certainly my experience with this district, anyone's intention. The goal is to make sure we're fully investigating issues and resolving them to the best ability to preserve people's privacy, preserve our students' privacy to the extent that's necessary, be transparent about information to the extent we can. But then also minimize the risk of liability to the district because I've, I've certainly fought through in my experience a number of lawsuits where too much information has been shared and then that, that person, that individual has legitimate claims against the, the school district or any employer for libel slander, right? Defamation, all those things that we have to work against that when we're investigating something and we're still trying to fact find and then move forward because rare occasion when something elicits a very cut and dry outcome, usually it's a bit of nuance and gray and we're all trying to move forward in the way that's most appropriate for the district. So I know it's not the best answer in the world, but it's, it takes a lot of trust and, and the school committee's role, as we've talked about, really had been legislatively taken out of the day to day operations of the, the district. And you trust your CEO, your, your superintendent to make sure that the appropriate staffing personnel decisions are being made on a day to day basis. Obviously, to the extent there's ever any actual litigation or financial implication that, that does involve the school committee. And, and there's many times we would have to go into executive session to talk about ongoing litigation or potential settlement if it's going to incur an expense. And certainly the school committee would always be apprised of those issues. But the goal is always to resolve those things before they ever were to reach a level that would require that type of involvement. But it's another reason why we want to make sure we preserve the school committee to the extent, you know, any, there would be future litigation. So that way you have the ability to remain somewhat neutral in that process and also not turn you all into fact witnesses where we ever to have to get into some sort of arbitration, DLR, Division of Labor Relations matter or actual litigation. So long answer, Bob, but I hope I touched on the points that you were hoping.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the thing is too, this business criticism that I've controlled information. And I'm wondering if I should even have the information in these personnel issues. I mean, obviously that would then mean that would all be, we'd all be hearing at the same time, whatever the superintendent, whatever the issue was. But I guess I'm wondering should, you know, is it even, is it even right for me to know stuff? It become awkward recently.
Sure. And that's not unusual, truthfully. I think especially given the situations you all have grappled with as a, as a district, I think it's, it's certainly, it, it brings to light this dynamic that I think is truthfully not, really not how people think a school committee is. When you think of a school committee, you would think they are involved in the day to day operation of the district and you are to an extent. But again, it's, it's limited to the areas we've talked about. I think should the chair know is always a bit of a, a delicate question and it depends really on the issue at hand. I do think there's an importance for the chair to know if there's something that could become public because then the chair is in the best position. I don't ever want someone to be surprised by a call from the, the press. And I think generally most committees, and I'm not sure about yours, but most committees have policies that say that all comments are through the chair. So if anyone else were to get a call, they refer it to the chair, right? And then the chair is in the best position to respond should there need, be a need for any sort of comment or otherwise. The chair doesn't have to know necessarily about these issues. I do think it, it allows for faster action because then it also could be part of the conversation about agenda setting. So the chair's responsibility is to set the agenda for each meeting. So if there is, sometimes there needs to be dialogue between the superintendent and the chair about whether something does need to become before the committee. How are we going to do that? Is there an executive session purpose? Is, does it need to be public? How long are we going to put on the agenda for? So those conversations necessitate the involvement of the chair. And, and the decision may be, we're going to push this off until X, Y, and Z happen. And so then the chair has knowledge, it's maybe coming down the line, but can't share that with the committee without violating the open meeting law. The open meeting law specifically prohibits against what's called serial communications, which means we'll all just call each individual member and have a one to one conversation. So that way we're not deliberating as a group. That in and of itself is a, an open meeting law violation. So once the chair has the information, frankly, it can't share that information outside the, the auspices of a, of an open meeting. So whether or not the chair gets the information, I guess, is the threshold question. Once the chair has the information, I don't think there is an option to share it outside the auspices of an open meeting. And that's determining whether it's in the purview of the committee, requires action, is appropriate, all those other considerations we talked about. But I do see reasons with regard to agenda setting, mitigation of liability, public, the ability to respond quickly to the need for public comment that would necessitate the chair having a certain level of information.
Sarah, could I just, that's Bob Munch again. Can I just ask a follow up on that with the open meeting law? What you just said confused me a little bit. I thought we were, I thought we were allowed to push information out as long as we weren't deliberating about things. So like if the chair had information, is he, would he be allowed to just broadcast that information to the school committee with no comment, no opinion, just fact?
Yes. Yes. I think it's hard with regard to, that's easy to do when it's a, you know, quick update on the status of a building project, right? It's, it gets a little more nuanced about whether there's any opinion or expressed when you're talking about a personnel matter and you're pushing that information out. I also get very concerned about risks of that information being further disseminated. So if the information's being pushed out in writing, that even though we can stamp all over it confidential, we all know there's all sorts of data breaches that could potentially happen. If your email's getting forwarded to a phone and your phone gets lost and someone gets access to it. So I get, I get nervous about putting things like that into writing, particularly when they're in the early stages of investigation or determination or pre-litigation, et cetera. So, so yes, the answer is you can have, when I was referring to serial conversations, I think I meant more, I did mean more by like phone, that you could call people and share information individually to avoid having an open meeting on a topic. That's certainly not permitted. The chair, any individual can push information out. My general advice is that that not come from any member of the body. If possible, that it would come from the superintendent, legal counsel, staff, because they are not subject to the open meeting law requirements about sharing that level of information. The chair, any member can push information, you're right. But it always runs the risk that people are going to reply all, or that there is some inherent opinion kind of nestled in that communication. So it can happen. It just needs to be done carefully.
Okay, thank you. And the, the other question I, I had around that was a barometer of how well the superintendent is performing his role to me would be personnel issues and maybe disciplinary issues or legal issues even. How would you suggest the school committee has visibility into how well he's performing those tasks if we don't have the information?
Sure. I, I'm not suggesting that you wouldn't necessarily have that information. Litigation, you certainly, you know, you, you are a party to the litigation if there is any. So if there were to be any arbitrations, grievances, actual legal cases, suits, you'll know about that because you, you need to, you're a party to them at those case. So I, I think you will know about those should they arise. With regard to situations where people have been otherwise moved along from the district or had disputes with the district, or they're, you're looking broadly at discipline, suspensions, written reprimands, things along those lines. I guess I would want it, you could always embed that in the superintendent's goals. If you have concerns about how the personnel is being managed of the district, keep in mind that the superintendent themselves doesn't always effectuate discipline. Usually that falls to the principal who's doing most of the discipline within each building. But that would be the way is through the supervision and evaluation process. And data could be shared on a, a de-personalized level. We'd have to be careful because if there haven't been, there's only been one suspension all year. We can't necessarily share the details because it would be obvious to those who would know about what we're talking about. But if you were looking broadly for feedback of have employees been disciplined this year? I think that information could be shared on a de-personalized level as part of the supervision and evaluation process for the superintendent, if that was a concern of the committee.
And that has to be shared publicly though, right Sarah?
It would. It would need to be the, the supervision and evaluation of the superintendent is a public, very public process. So we would have to be careful about how you're requesting that information and how that information's provided. But it, it, it could be, I could, you could find a way to make sure that that information, if that was a concern, is at least some report is provided on that.
Can I also follow up, two follow up questions about open meeting? One was about an issue of in general, if a personnel issue is going to come up in an agenda. You mentioned that. And if it's going to be part of an executive session, can you just explain, because it was quite a bit of questions about how that works? If we needed to talk about, just knowing the issue that people are well aware of now, if we needed to talk about it and if it met the requirements of open, of, of executive session, what are the requirements of that?
Sure. So I'm just gonna grab my open meeting law guide as we're talking to make sure I quote it to you appropriately. But generally, you cannot, you can talk about issues related to public, to performance, right? Like the superintendent's performance in open session. Actually, you can only talk about them in open session. There is a, an ability to move into executive session. It's purpose one to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. So the committee can talk about those things in executive session. Generally though, there are some requirements that go into place and that can compromise the effectiveness of such an open session, of an executive session. You have to tell whomever you're talking about that you're talking about them. And you have to tell them 48 hours in advance in writing. They have to, they get, get the right to attend. They get the right to speak on their own behalf. They get the right to make a recording of that session. They get the right to bring an attorney. And they get the right to potentially move that session into open session at their sole request. The school committee can't stop that. If they want it to be an open session, that, that's how it would move. And then, then you can have your executive session. So oftentimes I'm faced with the question from, from school committee clients of, well, but we want to talk about that person when they're not, we don't want to do it in front of them. And you just don't have that option under the law. Sometimes, you know, people are willing to leave the room or don't want to attend and they have that right not to attend. And you can have those conversations. But generally it's not, it, it, my experience is if people know they're being spoken about, they tend to want to be there for those, for those meetings and tend to want to participate in those meetings. But it is very limited to that. Purpose one is really the only, unless there's, unless it's a grievance or collective bargaining issue subject, or it's a contractual negotiation issue or maybe litigation, those are the other areas. You can sometimes talk about personnel actions under the auspices of executive session. But generally, if you're worrying about a complaint or a concern or a discipline of an employee, that would be in executive session under, under purpose one. And it's a reminder, even though you hear the words discipline and dismissal, the law expressly says that the superintendent has the sole authority to issue discipline and dismissal of anyone reporting under, under him. And the school committee actually can't overturn those actions. So while this executive session purpose would imply that you have the ability to talk about discipline and dismissal, I want to be clear that you don't have decision-making authority over discipline and dismissal of anyone other than the superintendent. It's because this law is written for all sorts of municipal bodies that have all sorts of different personnel obligations, different than school committees. So there are such other public bodies that would have a more active role in discipline or dismissal of employees.
And then the second follow up was sort of about that concept of serial deliberation, which I, I think is tricky and really hard to kind of function and be prepared if you want to be a good school committee member and do your homework and be in touch with your community. It's tricky. So an example, each of us hear about something at the soccer field or somebody sends us an email or somebody calls us and then we want to tell the others, it, it, you know, where is the boundary of that? Like, okay, you know, sometimes when, personally, when I've received something that is of a concern, I take that and I send it back to the superintendent and the chair. Please be aware, this person said this to me. If I speak to them, I say, this is, this is the structure. But sometimes amongst each other, we may have reasons to have a conversation. And I do get a little bit worried about where the boundary is on that.
It's good because it's, it's a very, very gray area. And so I would say that in my experience, most of the issues that are popping up in the community are related to personnel issues or some of them. And generally the best practice is to refer those issues to the superintendent and, and let the community member know. Sometimes there's a concerted effort in a community. And so all of you are getting peppered with different angles of, of the same issue. And it may make sense in those circumstances for the superintendent to reach out to the group or the chair to reach out to the group to say, a lot of you have expressed concern about issue X. I want to make you clear that this has been referred to the superintendent. It's going to be on our next agenda or we're going to be looking at it, right? That would be a communication that's okay because it's talking about agenda setting and talking about how to direct communications. Where it does get gray, truthfully, is if frankly, you're trying to form an opinion on a topic and you want to bounce that off your colleagues or, or talk about what other people's experience are on, on these issues. And, and the open meeting law is pretty stringent in that area that you really can't talk about any issue. The, the key is The, the key is any issue that's within the purview of the committee. Um, so anything that would come before you as a policy, budgetary, staffing issue is really not something that there should be any communication with outside of an open meeting. Now the law is a quorum, right? So you would have to have uh a full quorum in order to be violating the open meeting law. But the risk is, right? If you talk to one person and they happen to talk to the other person, you've created a quorum somewhat inadvertently. Uh, so you've just got to be really uh cognizant of that. And I think your approach to forward those things, that's why the chair can sometimes be helpful of funneling that information from all the members and trying to find a way to either get it onto the agenda, get it to the superintendent's attention, push back out information as necessary between meetings if that's, if that's required.
Well, that, I mean, that's also why you shouldn't reply all.
Correct.
Then you're applying to everybody and that's the whole committee.
Correct. Yeah. Replying all, like truthfully is a function. I wish we could just take off email for a number of reasons, but in the open meeting law sense, reply all is very, very challenging and it's also an easy place to make a mistake. I've replied all the things that I didn't intend to reply all to. So it's, it's something I usually, when I'm e- either communicating with a public body, I will always write at the top, even in the subject line, do not reply all. And I'll repeat it about seven times throughout the message. But it, it can happen and that creates an inadvertent um public discuss, or just inadvertent uh discussion on an issue potentially that should have become before a public meeting can be cured, right? You just do it at the next public meeting, talk about the communication. Social media is also an area that's wrought with potential risk. Um, if there's a Facebook conversation going on and three or four of you happen to be in that Facebook group and liking or commenting, you've got a deliberation going on, right? So you've got to be careful about who's commenting on what thread and if multiple people are commenting, uh, you could inadvertently create a deliberation on social media that was unintended. Uh, the other area we often see air uh concerns is multiple, a quorum attending another subcommittee meeting or a, a meeting of another committee and talking, any of them talking at public comment, because then you all requires for deliberation is one member expressing their opinion and people hearing it, a quorum hearing it. There doesn't have to be an active exchange for there to be a deliberation. Just one expression of an opinion to a quorum of the public body creates a deliberation.
Sarah, th- this is Orin. Um, I really appreciate you talking us through this. I have to say though, I I, I do find a little bit distasteful the format of, of this portion of the meeting insofar as it, it feels to me like we've sort of staged an, an effort for for presenting to the public that our hands were tied and there was nothing we can do. Um, which, which I don't agree with at all. I've, I've certainly been someone who's been vocal within the committee about what I think were uh failures that we had. And, and I'm very sympathetic with, to, to those in the public who have raised concerns as well. And I, I'm certainly the first to admit, these are incredibly challenging issues for us to cope with. But I, I wish we could approach the discussion from a perspective of how could we do better next time and not, well, there you go. We did it right. And there's nothing we could do next differently next time. And so I, I think a perfect example of this is, is the follow-up question that, that Bob Munch asked you, which, which I've been wondering about, which is the initial presentation sort of said, well, you know, you can't circulate any information that runs afoul of open meeting law. But, but that's not true. Information and deliberation are two different things. And, and so it seems to me we're sort of merging together questions of what the law actually requires, which we obviously need to stay squarely within as opposed to prudential questions of how we want to conduct ourselves as representatives of the community. And so uh maybe that's, that's just a long preamble to ask a, a question, which is suppose we, as a school committee, felt that we did want to handle this differently and that at the stage where an administrator cannot be in a building, um, we feel like that's something that's certainly appropriate to for the faculty in the building to know. Uh, and at the point where we have a potential, you know, serious personnel issue, we feel like the superintendent should notify the committee of that. And particularly at the point where we know that a newspaper has access to it and is going to be releasing a story uh that it be the committee and not just the chair that, that knows that's coming. If, if that were our goal, what would be your advice on how to do that most effectively?
Taking the last point first, um, I would say that the, you know, wanting to let everybody know a story maybe po- coming out, I think is, is fair to say, to have people, the committee know that the story is going to be published on X, Y, and Z. If, if we know that, I mean, oftentimes reporters give little bits of information about what the story is going to look like or what the topic's going to be. And sometimes they don't run the story. Uh, but if, if there is a knowledge of a story that's going to be run, I think it's we, I don't see an open meeting law violation for the, the superintendent to necessarily tell the committee that you may be contacted by a reporter about this issue that has arisen in the district. The, the risk that happens is that the committee members, of course, are going to have follow-up questions about cause I, I doubt anybody in that room would hear, well, what do you mean? A story is going to be run about this and I'm, this is the first I'm hearing about it. You're going to have follow-up communications and the risk of serial communications in that situation um where you're getting different bits of information from the superintendent because everyone's calling with different questions, right? That would be my concern uh with, with notice like that. It can be accomplished by just saying, I can give you this level of information. If you call and ask me questions, I don't have more I can share with you at this time, but I will, as this progresses, we'll have this on the agenda at the next meeting if that's appropriate. Uh, so that's the, you can always get pieces of information, but I think the risk is the follow-up questions that people would naturally have about uh being told there's going to be a, a story in the press. But can, can that information be shared? Sure. It can be shared in advance of a story, but the risk again is that you're getting pieces of the information as opposed to all of it, but maybe just knowing a story is going to be run is, would make people's minds at ease as opposed to reading the story the next morning and not knowing it was going to be run. The other two pieces you raised about when, when the school committee or should the school committee know if somebody's being asked not to be in a building? Um, it generally that is being placed on paid administratively, which is a personnel action. Uh, which is subject to the protections of, of some privacy under public records laws and the privacy statutes we have in our constitution in Massachusetts or the privacy protections we have in our constitution in Massachusetts. So we have to be cognizant that that privacy uh right exists and we have to be careful that we're not disclosing information um that could infringe on people's privacy. Uh, generally when we place people on paid administrative leave, it is non-disciplinary. It's something that is done to protect the employee, to protect the district, to protect the students. Because we don't know what the answer is yet, but we think there is a risk to the integrity of the investigation if that person stays or most commonly uh it, it prevents against disruption and it prevents against the risk of continuing behavior. Even though we may not know if the in actual behavior is happening, when we remove someone from the situation, it completely takes away the risk that that behavior is going to continue, making no judgments that the behavior happened in the first instance. So that's, that piece of it, could the committee ness- could, could the committee know that somebody's on a paid leave of absence? Yes, that information, it could, you could know it. I think the risk, right? The risk benefit here is that the follow-up question piece of why are they on a leave of absence? I think that, that would be dangerous to share because it would be in the investigation stage. And again, you'd be sharing information that could infringe upon privacy rights. It also could infringe upon uh the ability for the committee to serve as a neutral arbiter. Should there be any future appeals that come before the committee? Uh, but could the committee know necessarily if somebody's on a leave of absence? Yes, uh, they could know that. Uh, how that information gets shared, we'd have to be careful that if we're sharing it as part of a regular update in a school committee meeting, we wouldn't be able to share names. It couldn't be part, there's no reason it would be an executive session. Um, or we'd have to do it under purpose one, which could be challenging because it would be in the course of an investigation. Uh, but to provide it as just a one-off update from the superintendent in the course of a the way that the district is run. It could be shared. I think the risk again is whether or not we're infringing on the, the privacy rights of those individuals because not uncommon that we put somebody on paid administrative leave, investigate, find that it was not as alleged and you bring them back to work. And those people should be able to return to work without fear of retaliation. And if the entire school committee knows they were placed on paid administrative leave and then returned to work, they may look at them a little bit differently uh as they're progressing through and, and ask questions or, or treat them differently. And then we have a risk, the district's going to be alleged to have retaliated against those individuals and the employee would have the right to know that the school committee knows they're on uh paid administrative leave. So they may be looking for a different treatment from school committee members in order to substantiate a case for retaliation. Uh, so there's those inherent risks that would come with that. So I'd have to think carefully about how to best advise you uh to do that if that was the goal of the committee. Uh, but we could certainly talk that through. I'm not prepared today to give you that kind of procedure about how to do it. But we could talk through how to do that if that's something the committee would like to gain access to a higher level of personnel information. The last piece about whether or not the committee could know uh about discipline before the discipline is imposed, I, I would have some concerns that that would interfere with the authority of the superintendent to effectuate their legal duties. Um, and I don't know that the school committee could have a policy in place that says that this, essentially the superintendent needs to vet their personnel actions with the committee before taking those personnel actions, because I do think that could uh implicate the interference restrictions that are, are currently built into the laws. Uh, but I can certainly, we can talk through that if that's the will of the committee to uh have greater access to that type of information, but that, that may be a, a insurmountable hill is to get access to that type of information before the decisions are made. To get a report afterwards that so-and-so is no longer working with the district, I think is, is fair. And I, it probably, I think has happened in the situations that we're alluding to, that you were informed that they're no longer with the district. Uh, but not necessarily to the actual level of discipline um or decision-making that was imposed. But certainly there was no effort to stage this in a way that I was just trying to walk through what the the legal requirements are for school committees. So I'm happy to, to talk through alternative approaches than what's been taken to date.
And can I just say, Lauren, you know, your, your, your opinions are opinion and I get that, but there was a lot of back and forth conversation about what we do and do not have the right legally to do. And I personally asked, because I feel like having been to quite a few trainings. Um, and even though you have a law degree and I have a law degree, this is not my subspecialty. I really felt like it would be helpful for me to be able to ask questions of Sarah in a way. And when we knew the retreat was coming up, I, I personally asked for this. Other people, I thought, no. I felt like if we had, were able to have like all of our questions about the legal roles and I think the open meeting law and who gets invited and who doesn't and when we can go to executive session and when we don't is one that is really very fact-specific and very hard to apply. And what ends up happening is you look back and this is going to be one of my follow-up questions is sort of the whole, you know, I, I do care about whether or not I'm violating the law. I do take the role of school committee seriously. I do take the privacy of our employees and our, our school, um, our students very seriously and families. And I, I've experienced not sitting at this table, but well, you know, professionals in the past sharing private information in ways within the community that should not be shared. And I really hope that we are taking all of that very seriously and supporting our administrators and following open meeting law, following privacy law, FERPA, you know, HIPAA, all the things that we need to follow, knowing that we're also a very small community. So sometimes the rumor mill takes hold of a discipline action or something that's happening with either a student or a staff person. And w- we forget that people have the rights to privacy. So for me, having this very robust class on where it fits, the law fits with our duties is something I personally asked for because I felt like we were debating, well, can we do this and can we do that? And i- in six years previously, there were very few times that something like this came up, although I personally had some questions about the ed reform law and called our representative MASC and got some answers, some of which I didn't like, but helped me to guide myself in what I can and cannot do as a school committee member. So you know, I, I personally asked for this. Other people, I think nodded and we thought this was a good time to do it. I don't think it was to take cover, but I do think it's important that both we have a clear sense of the law and that we have attendees. I believe we're at twenty you know, something. And then all these people in the room that maybe also want to know what are the legal structures? Because people also are afraid of things being hidden, but I think if it was their family or their child or their job, they would want privacy to be respected. And when you live in a small town, it doesn't happen. And sometimes there's real harm to that. And I've certainly seen it and I've lived here for twenty nine years. So what do they say? The best thing about a small town is everybody knows your business. The worst thing about a small town is everybody knows your business and we need to be professionals and we need to do our job in a way that we are respectful and careful about how we do our job. And I, I take that very seriously. And I don't think it's a question of trying to avoid. It's really a question of trying to do my job within how it's set up. If I don't like it, then I go to the legislature and say, time to change it there, because this is the law and the way it's set up.
And actually, this, this is a fairly good segue to the, the question that I've had. Sarah, this is Christine Martin. Thank you so much for that, the teach. I, that was very clear and very helpful. It occurred to me as you were talking that there's something that I, I don't know anything about, which is what are the possible consequences to a school committee who violates the statutes? And how does that play out and what does it look like?
Sure. So it depends on the statute. Um, eh, with open meeting law, if you were to violate the statute, any member of the public or member of the body can file an open meeting law complaint with the division of open government. Uh, and then there's an investigation, the committee has to respond, there's a process. The remedies kind of range depending on what the violation is. So uh, one of the more severe violation outcomes is if somebody breaches the confidentiality of executive session. The risk is the executive session minutes become public. Uh, and the committee loses the ability to maintain confidentiality uh with regard to things in executive session. There are um monetary penalties, I think some civil penalties that can attach. I would say those are rare for open meeting law. More likely is uh that the committee has to redo a vote or uh redo minutes or take trainings, uh get an admonishment that regularly can happen from the division of open government. Violations of the public records law contain actually slightly more stringent uh violations because now there's more access to individuals to be able to bring lawsuits uh against public bodies for not complying with the public records law or disclosing records they shouldn't have disclosed. And we have seen legal actions there where personnel usually uh former personnel of a, of an, a pub, public entity um sue because they feel like their privacy has been infringed upon because documents were disclosed or information was disclosed that shouldn't have been disclosed uh because it should have been retained to protect the privacy of the individual. More likely you see uh just regular tort claims along those lines. So violating other statutes, if you violate uh any of your statutes related to one fifty E, which is the public bargaining law, you face the risk of grievances and then potentially claims the division of Department of Labor relations in the form of unfair labor practices, which can involve public admonishments, uh required uh monetary remuneration to staff who are impacted, uh, public postings, et cetera. So it really ranges uh which statute you're talking about, but all of them do come with teeth. So to say that there are uh remedies that can be sought either by the individuals or by the government entities that are tasked with enforcing those laws. And I just, I have to jump off in five minutes. I apologize. I have another school committee meeting I've got to jump on to, but I am here for another five if anyone has any additional follow-up questions.
I guess for one for me, and so maybe just answer that question is the next thing on our agenda, when we get to it is distributed leaders assignment of oversight and advisory responsibilities beyond the chairman. And so I think that there's some, when you talked about sort of the role of the chairman. Um, you know, I think if you have a minute to talk about the roles of each of the members in our individual way, the chairman, then there's a vice chair typically, the secretary or the three sort of, I guess, executive officers, if we want to call that. Maybe you can address a little bit of that. How much of it is at the discretion of our committee? Which I think is some of what, at least I've heard some members wanting to take a look at is how do we distribute, you know, and, and feel like we're all part of the process, which I think is very important. There are seven of us and many- There are seven of us and many things have to come to our full body vote. So if you can address anything, fine. If not, maybe we can talk about amongst ourselves. And if we have questions that pertain, we can ask you at another time.
Yeah, I'd be happy to review any policies that you're going to be creating about the the role of the chair. Generally, the law requires that the chair is in charge of any public business meeting of the the committee. So I don't think you can delegate to others the setting of the agenda, the running, the meeting. That generally falls to the chair by by law, by the open meeting law. The vice chair steps in when the chair is unavailable. That's probably the the most important job of the vice chair. In cities, it's a little different because the chair is always the mayor. So the vice chair has slightly different responsibilities in a city governance structure. But i- in in your situation. Beyond that, the responsibilities of the chair can can vary to setting the locations of the meetings, communicating with members about scheduling the meetings. Sometimes that's delegated to a school committee secretary who's maybe not a member of the committee or a member of administration, which is fine. The vice chair, did you say you have a treasurer and a clerk or no?
No, we just have a secretary and I don't know what the mostly, but we do have our Amy, as our wonderful person does all the minutes. So reviews them. And then, you know, that's our secretary doesn't have to actually do the minutes, fortunately.
Yep. So that if the secretary is not doing the minutes, their their role is somewhat limited to maybe serving as the chair. If the vice chair is also not available, sometimes I've seen that as they're the third in command, should there be a day when the both the chair and the vice chair are unavailable. The other way I've seen kind of active governance roles is chairs of subcommittees and and asking people who aren't the chair of the the full committee to be chairs of subcommittees and then they're able to delegate the work or and direct the work of those subcommittees a little more hands on than perhaps they would if they're not the chair of the full committee. And then the subcommittee is able to bring reports and the chair of those subcommittee has a a voice at the full committee meeting to talk about their subcommittee work. Those I would say are the typical duties I see of a chair. I haven't really looked at anything different than that, but I'd be happy to review something if you wanted to take a different approach with the role of the chair.
We don't have a ton of time with you present, but maybe Lauren could kind of outline what your vision was or what you or to begin the conversation.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. If was there anything else folks wanted to ask Sarah on? Kind of right, right?
No, only like we'll follow up if there's something I think if we come back through that, that would be a good opportunity. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Sure.
I had asked Bob to put distributed leadership on the agenda. Really, I think it was framed nicely earlier in the conversation when he mentioned on one hand, he sort of plays this role of being the only one who receives all this information, which leaves him in obviously a very difficult position. And conversely, there may be a lot of things we don't feel should just be blasted out to everybody. And so one alternative was raised is, well, should it not even go to Bob necessarily? And it it seemed to me that and this is my perspective, Mark, Mark may have a different one, but that that members of the committee play a valuable oversight slash advisory role when issues do arise. And that I don't think we want to have a situation where we tell Mark, no, you can't come tell anybody anything. Don't ask anybody for any help. That doesn't seem like a good arrangement. And so it it seemed to me it might be a good idea to try to define in some way additional responsibilities that other members of the committee have to contribute to addressing types of issues that come up. So as a starting point, to Sarah's point that we have subcommittee chairman, we could say you know, Mark, when it when an issue comes up that, you know, the sort of thing you bring to Bob, ask yourself which of these subcommittee jurisdictions this fits most closely? Is this a personnel, therefore HR kind of issue? Is it a money, therefore budget issue? Is it a culture issue? Is it a policy governance issue? And now you have two people instead of just one person to talk to about it. And if there were two instead of one, we don't run into any of the sort of quorum open meeting law type issues. But we double the 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 resources available to address the issue and incorporate more of the committee in 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 the kinds of issues that arise and add a sort of tripwire, for lack of a better word, where someone might be inclined to say, you know, wait a minute, this feels like something we do need to figure out a way to inform the committee about if that's something that that needs to be raised. So so that's only one kind of formulation of what that could look like, but I thought it was worth us discussing different ways that we can get away from a model where we only have one member of the committee who's who we feel is available under these various constraints to contribute to addressing situations where there might be a role for the committee.
One thought I have about that, thank you, Lauren, is obviously the difference between an urgent somewhat crisis situation that we've just dealt with versus generally, one of the things I've really appreciated is as the chair of the TLC Committee is typically Mark, you know, reviewing the agenda with Mark, Mark being available and then talking with his administration team and thinking, okay. You know, an example, we were beginning in June in our TLC Committee, we were talking about some of the issues of bullying that were coming forward that came forward in a public meeting. We were thinking, strategizing about ways that we can address that. And so that subcommittee talked about it. And then when we had a conversation at our next full committee meeting, and Mark was present at that, and we had ideas about how we might address it. Then we came to the full committee meeting. There was already some conversation happening. And similarly, it comes to HR where there's been conversations about, hmm, what's our leadership structure? Do we need to think about some someone different? What about, you know, we've talked generally about how is the middle school model working versus high school? That happens maybe at the HR committee meeting and dig in and maybe get more information and then be prepared to to report at the bigger, as a larger committee meeting to have a more robust discussion about it. I feel like in some ways we're following that. It has its limits when there's a crisis, but there typically haven't been, you know, again, a crisis like this one hasn't happened very often. It just happened to have happened. You know, in the last year. So I think that that is one way that I do think it's working effectively. And the other part would be maybe to have more communication with each of the chairs. What we've done lately is we report at the meeting, okay, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this versus maybe thinking ahead. And I think we had some conversation, if it came from you, Orin, about when we look ahead at our agendas, let's build in each of the subcommittee's work into the agenda to talk more robustly about things we're working on versus just it's at the bottom and we report what we're doing. And each of the chairs having the ability to you know, say to Bob, can you ultimately, he's responsible for agenda setting, but if we have, we're working collaboratively, we're saying, we would like to see this particular issue on the agenda if it fits with what the school committee does as opposed to interfering with building administration or management, et cetera, if it fits within the role that Sarah outlined. So that's some ways that I've actually seen it working well. You know, I think certainly could work better, but in the chairs in the in that way. That's just a thought I have that I've seen work well.
So, Orin, do you mean issues that that come in in general or or ones that would typically be solely considered confidential in in nature?
I I guess I would say issues where we have to be reactive. You know, I think in general, when we sort of look through you know, Sarah's rundown of here are the school committee responsibilities are very clear in the proactive, here's what should be on our school committee agendas. But I think, you know, the reality is that other things do happen that don't fit that template. And you know, maybe we go three years without another such thing happening. But, you know, we we've certainly had a number of them over the past year. Before that, we had two years of COVID and those related. I mean, we live in interesting times. And so for me, it doesn't be a confidential thing at all. I actually comes to mind. You know, at at one point, I think it was in the middle of Omicron, there was sort of an issue of how are we going to do enough testing coming back from the holiday break? And so, you know, I think importantly, and in keeping with with Ed reform, I think it starts with Mark. It's not a question of you know, we're going to give him a bullet list of in each of the following situations, here's a flow chart of who you have to call. I think it's more a question of, there obviously are issues where he does look for the school committee's input. And so having I think right now it is sort of very much by default. We have it designed as Mark calls Bob and Bob decides does this go more broadly to the committee or not? And so I think it would just make sense to say you know, to to give Mark a, you know, when when you're looking for school committee input on something, whether it's whether it's input, whether it's, you know, elbow grease, which again, isn't going to fall under the mass general law, but sometimes it comes down to like we have to get a statement out on this and we'd really like to have someone look over this statement before I send it out. I think we would be well served to have some mechanism that provides additional resources to mark in those situations.
Yeah, I I sort of feel like the subcommittee model works. And then maybe, I don't know, Mark, you have some thoughts about how how that might, I mean, a number of us are all new to this. So I think that the way we work together to be collaborative on other issues has been now talking about, I think, and if you use an example, with some feedback about, and we've talked about doing it, we don't, we haven't done it yet because we just started. Feedback about how the school committee can be more present and visible in the buildings and in the schools. There's some limitations as to how we do that, make sure that we're not interfering. But there's also some flexibility as to how we do that, whether it's through the HR committee or whether it's through the culture committee coming and having a representative in each of the buildings present at at situations. We started doing that last year and I can see us. We've talked about expanding that. We haven't, we haven't formulated what exactly how that's going to work. Are we coming to a faculty meeting? Well, faculty might not want to have a separate meeting for that examples, you know, I don't know.
I will say oftentimes with our subcommittee meetings, I do feel like a lot of it is talked out ahead of time, you know, the the process right now is that Mark, you would go to Bob as our chairman and then we eventually have a subcommittee meeting. I I'm guessing that a lot of what was discussed between the two of you might not get relayed down to our subcommittee. So it sounds incorrect if I'm wrong, but it sounds like you're suggesting that it would be beneficial to have possibly the the head of each of those subcommittees be present in the initial conversations about these topics. Is that right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, if it's sort of, if it's an issue that that Mark wants to engage with the school committee on that we sort of by default, offer him a team of two with and look, it's it's not all going to fit neatly. By default, Mark can choose who he doesn't doesn't want to talk to. But that that we have that team of two, because then I think it also you know, Bob's not on the HR subcommittee. So
Yeah, I don't, I don't attend, you know, the of the four subcommittees, I attend two of them. And I'm not part of any agenda setting.
Right. And so if it's something that Mark may have talked to Bob about. And then we have an HR subcommittee about meeting relate to it. We, there's sort of a disjuncture there.
So, I mean, certainly I'm not going to tell you how to, you know, run the committee and and it's not my role to do that, but you know, I I think it is helpful, I think, to have the committee as thought partners sometimes when, you know, we need to kind of work through an issue, right? You know, I I often, you know, will say that, you know, the smartest person in the room is the room. And so sometimes there's, you know, something to be gained by having some more, you know, people to kind of, you know, bounce ideas off to maybe even play out some hypothetical scenarios, you know, and and go down that, you know, thought exercise of what ifs, you know, and I just want to make sure that it's clear because I think conceptually, I'm hearing this, but I want to make sure that everybody's of the same mind. Or when we think about the idea that you've proposed is if there's a need, you know, for me to say, hey, I could use a little extra counsel on this, to reach out to Bob and the chair of the whatever subcommittee it falls to, is that?
Yeah, that was, that was my starting point. Someone could say
I just don't want to
do it alphabetically.
I don't want it to be misconstrued to say, oh, you know, we're gonna have more than that because then also now we get back into this, you know,
No, that's
forum and and thing too, right? So so that that would be one hypothetical design then would be to to work with school committee chair, who is Bob at this point. And then what the subcommittee chairs would be, you know, at whatever points, you know, there in those functions. So for me, that would be helpful. And, you know, now speak my truth, that would be helpful. The other way to me could also work in terms of and probably I don't know if they're mutually exclusive. I think they can actually still, you know, work the way that we've done in terms of subcommittees. But I think that for the subcommittees to be more perspective from, you know, the way that I see the operations of the committee as an outside objector looking in is that the observer looking in is is that the subcommittee, you know, it would be great for them to start to make suggestions in terms of, you know, whether it's a policy or, you know, other changes or refinements that need to be made or revisit old policies. So that, you know, when some committees are working, they're doing some subset of work and then they're presenting that work, you know, to the full committee for adoption. Or maybe that's a good place for first reads of policies, you know, so that, you know, maybe we can enhance our effectiveness to to do those things more often. Another potential model that I've seen places work operate is they'll have two meetings. What one is a business or an action meeting where votes are taken. And there's another set aside for workshops and you just kind of come together and, you know, there won't be any votes or decisions made that night, but it's an opportunity to work on on issues as a as a committee in open session, right? So obviously we're going to have an audience as we do our, you know, workshopping around, but that's another model that I've seen work pretty successfully is having that work session and then the the actual action session is two separate you know, meetings in the same month. I'm not trying to ask anyone to go to another meeting just to have a meeting, you know, you may be wrong, but you know, if we're looking for new ways to, you know, be more collaborative and have more dialogic engagement within the community and within the committee, that might be another potential option. But you know, suffice to say, it would be very helpful to be able to, you know, have a little bit more dialogue as we try to work. Those times when we have to be more responsive. Certainly seems to make sense to be able to utilize the resources that that the committee presents. So you know, I think that there are people in the committee who have expertise in certain areas and and how one accesses those and and who decides to in increase the number of individuals that that have access to certain types of information. I I think it's something that would always be with the discretion of of the superintendent and 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 the school committee chairman. However, I I would hate to think that there are resources available to the superintendent or to you that we're we're not utilizing because we feel, well, for whatever reason.
One of the things I think in that approach of the workshop business meeting model that I really like is I've noticed that at times when we do the budget and I'm looking at it a little bit because I see department heads and faculty members. You know, we then say, you know, we were doing the the high, the middle high school budget. And sometimes we, this is passes before you, Mark, but there was a way in which different department heads would talk about the changes and what they're looking to see. And you know, it was all really couched in the idea of money. And that's fine. That's important. That's our job. But I really love the opportunity to hear about programming and what is happening that isn't solely about a vote or that isn't solely about, you know, a money situation. So for example, you know, sometimes faculty, well, I'll just give an example. We did the lacrosse vote last year. So that was the athletic director and a number of family members. And they came in, they said, what if we did this this way? And they they were very prepared. Sometimes it's very student forward, which I really love. It's an opportunity to really hear the kids. The Moore School brought students in to talk about their second step program and that was really amazing. So if we were able to use some of this both for workshopping to help us to understand what's happening in education and have some understanding better about, for example, the book read that you're doing and you gave us a chance to share in that, which I haven't started yet. But, you know, that gives us a chance to have a more robust conversation about policies that then or or issues or approaches or something that then may come up later in a budget sensitive, right? Like In a budget sensitive, right? Like, we're looking to change how we do leadership in the middle school as an example. We've had conversations about MIAA. I've had some parents come up to me and say, this MIA situation and travel for the kids is still burdensome and problematic. You know, there's opportunities, I think, sometimes to have those conversations in a deeper way. You know, let people know ahead of time this is what we're going to be talking about, because parents' time and is valuable too and faculty time, and they can say. Oh, I really want to be here there for that conversation because I know that that's going to be an important one for my students or I have something to offer, et cetera, and I think. That does give us a little bit more of a two-way communication, not just people present and we vote. And I'd love to see that. I'd love to see us be able to 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 have dialogue and if it's. A public meeting and we're sitting around a table like this and we're talking about scheduling, for example, I mean, here's another one. I think a student did a civics project on. And they presented a letter to us on what time school should start, you know, biologically. Developmentally, what time should kids come to school? I mean, that could be a subject of a workshop and we could literally have school cycle, you know. Or mental health and we could have that. And I start to see a whole bunch of areas that I feel like I need to know more. But we actually do come to places where we vote on it and we we take in good faith that you're recommending something that's worthwhile, it's in the budget, maybe. The finance committee's talked about it, but it doesn't really give us the backstory and it doesn't give us that stuff where. We can make a choice, we can make a choice to do MIAA or not, for example. Um, because we haven't really had the robust conversation, so I love that idea of the. Business meeting and the workshop and then using the subcommittee to inform and do the prep work perhaps perhaps for some of that. Workshopping information that happens. I I love that idea. Because the votes are, you know, we vote on what we know we're going to vote on and then the rest of it is a little more informational.
Is that there's a, I think there's a lot of um potential value to this idea, just kind of reflecting on how we've done things. In the past, but by past, I'm not talking about the immediate past, but even, you know, going back years and I I don't. Don't think we have really thought of it this way. I think it's a new way of, you know, kind of considering. The relationship between the subcommittees and the superintendent and. Relative to the to the rest of the committee. I I think I think it's good. I think a lot of, a lot of promising ideas are being offered. It feels like there's. Uh, a level of support from the committee, at least the people voiced an opinion so far. Um, I am chair of the Governance and Leadership Committee and I've often thought that there's probably more that we could be doing. I love the idea of, you know, being better integrated, the the project around, you know, how do we sort of be more visible in the schools? How can, you know, how can we be. Um, more present, more more supportive is is an important one that I think we want to, we want to jump on this year, but, you know, also. As a resource to you, Mark, but I, you know, I think it it's a dynamic that has to go both ways, right? So to me, it's about. Making things better, not changing something that was wrong, you know, not a correction, but but, you know, truly. Talking about this is a way that we could actually do our work as a committee better. So, yeah, I'm I'm, I would say I'm open to it. I. I wonder if we might though, you know, sort of give it a little more structure and maybe, I don't know, maybe we could collect the ideas and actually, you know, sort of put them down. To to give us something to really respond to.
Yeah. And just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting any, you know, needing correction, but I I do do it the same way that this is an opportunity to add. To be additive and, you know, I think bringing more value to the work of the committee.
Okay.
Well, just in terms of next steps on this, I, it doesn't strike me as something we ultimately need, like a policy and the policy book. I don't think. Um, but if it's helpful, kind of like we've been doing with the goal-setting minutes and so forth, I'll try to summarize something to bring back. Our next meeting is just pretty soon and people can either say, yeah, this is, this is roughly the sense of the committee or. No, or it has has run off in a completely different direction within, we need to cross part of it out. Um, but that could be a good way to sort of make sure we have consensus on on where we want to hit.
And to the extent that it makes sense, I'm happy to be a reviewer or a thought partner with you on that.
Yeah.
There's two people and so I think we could do that and think about it if you're.
No, that's great.
You're happy to do that.
And you should be goal-setting or goal-setting. No, no, seriously.
And then we can feel what teachers feel like every day.
You know, prioritize, uh, you know, as a committee, we we've gone through what what goals we want to reach. And, uh, you know. Perhaps the purviews of the subcommittee is is to bring back to the to the full committee. What that, what, how those goals will fit and what what they hope to achieve within the coming year.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, may I ask for a break? It's been an hour and a half and I think our agenda is still pretty hefty. I think we allocated till eight o'clock.
It is, and but before we take the break, you, we have, I think we have a lot of people here for the enrollment discussion. Is that correct? Um.
We moved that around, maybe bumped that up.
Yeah, I'm just asking permission of the committee to move that up and then get back to the rest of the agenda after that.
Sure, great.
Okay, then we'll do that after the break.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Sub two and ten that will break at eight, even if we haven't found through the break. I'm just asking, could my husband's in all, it was an emergency.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, they, you know, the idea is not to stay all. You know, I mean, we've been a little bit past maybe, but I.
That's fine.
At some point, we may just have to break.
I think I'm sure that.
I'd like to have something.
Keep me in the loop.
You know, this is a restful day, to me, it's a restful time. And so, uh, we can go as long as we want.
I assume it's nine one one, nothing wrong with like me getting even that, that's what I think around this, when you start a Q and saying.
Because most things, not all things, many things, I kind of have to kind of go through the.
Yeah, exactly. That's, I mean, and I usually just, my role is secretary, I don't even know what that really is. I also mean, we weren't so lucky to have any, but, um, typically I just say like, you know, thank you for reaching out. Whoever and will talk as best as possible to meeting, just tell me about that.
I I feel like, I mean, I can, I'm sure like my, you know, I think is to kind of keep me in the loop and listen, like, I really appreciate.
Oh, good, okay. So I just know if you're like, oh, my God, there's another email, like, deal with it, you know? Okay.
I appreciate that. Yeah, because I think we have to be careful, right? We don't want to like, be. I want to say we're responsible, but I don't want to be hyper responsible now, okay? Every time someone says the.
Right, let's put a fire out.
You know, pull us around.
Yeah.
But I think it's helpful to look, to hear the the trends, the patterns of the theme, and say, okay, this is something that, yeah, you know, we need to really address. The way to do that.
And I mean, because it's actually, it's been so free, like, I welcome even if they got there, just like, hey, just. Call our family, I'm going to meet the school members, you know, I'm not sure, like, that's what we.
You know, having community forums at this course, good idea, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Open dialogue.
Because we have to split it up, but I think that would be better. I I don't, I'm not a huge fan of public forums and.
And we don't want people to like, come on as a linchmal, right?
Right, yeah.
I didn't see a lot, I didn't see a whole lot of good pitch for us. Worried about it.
That's why I walked in last, just to check it out. Just kidding.
But, you know, like a coffee conversation kind of thing, you know. Being up for that, this is the the format, this is kind of the expectation in terms of, you know, as a group, we can conduct ourselves and like, people can.
Well, that's, the departments do that. They do like coffee with a cop, which is like a group seminar meeting with, um, people within the town, just like. Right. I had no idea, yeah. Yeah, is she?
Yeah. Yeah, well, one was Tom, well, I was just speaking, but I didn't, I was looking for hands.
Okay.
He said he'd like this, so I.
Give him a chance or?
No, I just get him back.
Yeah, that's one of the things is I feel like we're ignoring people other than professionals. Like, in other words, like, they want to speak from Zoom, they have to be able to do it in a way, but I can't even see.
Thank you for that. Yeah, yeah, many times better.
Good. Nasty, yeah.
Okay, um, we're going to resume the meeting now and. Uh, enrollment is the item on the agenda and I've had. You know, quite a bit of correspondence regarding, and I think other members have heard stuff too, on. I had a lengthy letter from Michael Tullock. Um, I heard from Sarah Lane. I heard from, uh, Christie Brew and. Maybe that's, maybe that's it, but I think other people have have raised this question too. And I think the question comes up around an increase in numbers this year, um. A dramatic increase in numbers at at Morris and, um, and the high school also. Um, but I think primarily people here because of Mars. So, um, and, you know, I just wanted to point out before we get into discussion that. Um, you know, I was principal for twenty five years and we had in. Oh, and I've been gone for fifteen, so if you don't recognize me, it's totally understandable, but, um. We used to have, we used to have sixty five kids in a class fairly routinely, um, in three sections. We did have one period of three years when we had a grade that started in kindergarten with fifty one. When, by the time they hit first grade, they were sixty six. By the time they were in third grade, it was seventy five. Eighty eight in fourth grade and eighty five in fifth grade, and for the last three years of that. We, we used a special ed classroom and we took it over and had a fourth section. Um, and that's the only time that we've gone above three sections, but it was very routine and in our strategic plan that. Mr. Lee was the superintendent when we, he helped us finish this, the the first strategic plan, uh. We had set some guideline numbers of. For K one and two, um, fifty four students and. Three, four and five, sixties as kind of optimal, kind of like that would be, we wouldn't really want to go above that. There are times you have to go above that. But that that would be kind of our upper limit, um, generally speaking, and, uh. And we've tried to stay within those guidelines and then numbers, numbers decreased and decreased and decreased. Uh, some of it with the pandemic, we lost some students to homeschooling, we lost them to. Um, private and parochial schools, some came back, some didn't, um, and so the numbers got down. From, we used to have way back four hundred students in those years that I was talking about, three eighty nine, three eighty five, whatever. But more recently, it's been in the three twenty or below, and last year was two ninety six, so the increase to. Um, three seventeen, whatever it is, three. Yeah, three forty one with pre with pre K is, you know. That's our biggest number in recent years, but and so people have gotten used to us having very small numbers, um, but. We're, we're within the guidelines, but I think it feels dramatically different because there was such an increase this year. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Maybe it'd be helpful to hear from Mark about, sort of, I see, we have a number of different charts here. And maybe Mark could let us know sort of how he approached this year, yeah, knowing that last year was Mark's first year and also still. A lot of restrictions for COVID and then this year, and we're into the first month, basically.
Well, I think just to assign you more, um, just, you know, for everyone who hasn't had the benefit of of seeing the numbers, I think it'd be helpful. Probably to just start with with what the numbers are this year versus last year.
So.
I will make every effort to share my screen, yeah.
If you want, I can connect to this zoom then.
No, I'm I'm on and I can, I just need to bring bring up your.
He wants to get it set up, but then again.
Go bring up yours.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, that has, is that.
Neither, because I'm just like, I just want to see the chat. Sustaining. Shouldn't be that hard, you just have. I'm just getting a bigger version here and. Make sure that I've got.
Any of you want to come forward, you can see. We won't, we we don't want, because you're going to see these charts. It's a pretty big screen, but I think if you're, if you're not a numbers person. You know, and feel free, like.
Just the Morris tab?
Yeah.
Okay, but that's compressed, oh, okay, you know, all right, okay.
But once you share your screen, you should remember.
Yeah, all right, so hang on while I share my screen. System preferences, this has never happened.
Yeah, you should go, just put that green beam down, I was going to share screen.
I know, I did, and they want me to do some stuff in my security and privacy.
Will work with somebody else.
Yeah, so maybe. Yeah.
Bear with us for a second, sorry.
Yeah. I do want to say that we, um, back in two thousand fifteen, um. We were having a discussion in March about school choice and should we have percentages on, and I proposed to the committee. On that we do no more than fifty percent in any grade and no more than, not higher than forty percent in the district. Um, and and it was actually voted down six to one by the committee. But it then, our then superintendent, uh, Tim Lee. Actually used that as his guidelines over the years. We weren't, we didn't approach forty percent at that time, and that didn't come until years later. But, um, and every superintendent since has used that as a as a rough guideline. The reason some people voted against it was, um, A, they either didn't want the choice or B. Um, they wanted the superintendent to have greater discretion and go go beyond those numbers. Um, and so even I opposed it and it got voted down six to one, so it's never been policy. Uh, but it has been a guideline that the superintendents have used, so.
And and maybe I can also add for those, because I know some people are, like, and Christie mentioned, like, kindergarten last year, so. You don't always know about sort of the nuts and bolts of this stuff. It's like the sausage making of of schools is that. We vote every year on whether or not we're going to continue in school choice and under the laws that govern school choice, we have to decide to opt in. If we decided some year to opt out, we are committed to every student that we have until they graduate. So I'm not suggesting anyone saying that we're going to do this, and certainly I haven't heard that from anybody, but if at some point. Lennox as a town decided to no longer have school choice, it's it's in, by the way, it's an opt-in, opt-out. And then we have to follow the laws about how it works and some of you are also aware that there, the one preference that can be given, because other preferences cannot. Is if you already have siblings in the district, correct me, Dr. Goslin, if I'm incorrect. So for some people. Their family may be waiting to get a sibling in or they may be waiting and being like, well, wait a minute, all this time we've been in two districts, but there's been no opening, so. My sit, my other child can't be in the district with with my older child, so that's just to let you know. If at some point as a town or as a school committee, we voted to stop getting choice, we would finish out. All the kids that we've taken, that we've committed to, and then we would move forward with not adding any, and then, of course, our demographics would go down and we've. In the past, had pretty robust conversations about what does it mean to have a district? What does it look like to have a lot of kids? Just kind of what you guys are raising. What does it mean to have too many? Was it too few? When you get up to middle school and high school, when it comes to sports, like, there's just a lot of different issues. And I think this is something that maybe even, you know, I'm going to put it out there as a goal is maybe we have. A little bit more of a roundtable conversation about it in a way. We did it. Quite a few years ago when I was on school committee, we did that. We had like open forums. We even had like a brainstorming where we were putting stickers on the walls and all of that kind of stuff. And sometimes that feels like it's more than just being told an answer, and so. I'm saying that I'm open to that kind of a dialogue because I feel like there are a lot of families that have graduated out. that have graduated out, that were part of that conversation, including my own. And then you're new to the district or new to the, having kids in the district and you're like, what is this all about? And it starts to raise this question, so.
I think that's, it's a really good comment. And I also want to say, when I first saw these numbers and reflected on the numerous, many, many, many conversations that we had and a large amount of data crunching that went into trying to analyze the numbers to figure out what was optimal. I, I thought there was some irony associated with the fact that we are actually confronting the opposite problem from what we were agonizing about for years, which was our declining enrollment. And so here we are talking about rising enrollment, and I, I, I think that the data, if I looked at it correctly prior to the meeting, is going to show we actually do have more resident students, which is a fabulous non-problem that, that, you know, this is the situation that we have been hoping for, for, for years. So just, just some context from the past.
And to put a visual to kind of what's been explained, because I think it's hard to follow if you're just sitting here listening to the conversation. So over the years, in terms of bad, the school committee worked, developed a strategic plan to say, like, what size should our school be? What size should class be? And so that team set some optimal numbers, right? And so basically it's saying that, you know, 54 students in early elementary, kindergarten was the goal, 60 students in each of the grades to balance out Morris. So what that works out to is class sizes of 18 for our youngest and 20 for our oldest. And class size is one of these things where, you know, there's a lot of debate, a lot of feelings around it. I've had some of the same ones that you've had too, because I have children in schools, right? And so the research on it is mixed. There is no research that says, hey, small class sizes are better, you know, or having larger class sizes are better. There. And then there's not even an agreement in the research studies as to what even is characterized as a small class, right? And so generally, the studies that have been done try to define that, and it's usually between 16 to 18 students in the research literature is called small class size. In Massachusetts, the average class size is just under 26ers per, per class. So we're significantly below that. One of the ideas around class sizes, all right, if we have fewer kids, they get more attention from the teacher, that's a good thing, right? And if that's the way that we're framing the value, yes, that is a very good thing. The, what we lose as we shrink class sizes, obviously, teacher to student input grows, but student to student input and interactions decreases, right? And according to research, kids learn a lot from the kids they have in their classrooms, right? And just as a former teacher myself, I knew that, you know, collaborative learning, group work works really well, it works best when you have a team of four. And so in a perfect world, all of our classrooms would be a multiple of four. I can tell you from being a classroom teacher, you know, I taught, I think my smallest class was probably around 20, my largest was 32. It's much easier to teach 20 and 32, you know, don't get me wrong. Was it, you know, radically different teaching, you know, 20 students versus 22, not really, right? And so there did, is a sweet spot, I think, that we reach in talking about this. But the thing that really guides my thinking is, if this was, you know, with previous folks who came together and spent hours crunching data and decided this is the, the perfect, you know, or the best size for school and for classrooms to operate at. That's always in my thinking as I'm trying to consider how many students we accept. We are in the glorious position that Lennox is a very sought-after district. We have wait lists at just about every grade level, and we have, this year we have more people applying, coming into Lennox than we ever have, right? And so those are, are good things that, you know, I think are a strong testament to our teachers and the administrators and the kids that go to our schools and what we do with those children. So the man remains very high. We try to balance this, there's some unwritten rules and those kind of say, we don't want to go over as a total district, more than 40% of choice students. We still want to kind of feel like it's, you know, Lennox, right? And we also really don't want to have a classroom where the, the balance of choice to resident students is greater than 50%, right? And that makes a lot of sense too. So we try to keep those things in mind. They're not hard and fast rules, but they're suggestions that we've tried to kind of stay within. So just so that people are aware, I just want to make sure that you understand that this is kind of where, when the conversation a few minutes ago was focusing on the optimal numbers, those are the, the optimal numbers that were discussed in the past. Also, this is good reasons for this beyond, you know, classrooms, but it's also, you know, and my own kids will tell me, yeah, you know what? They went to run a class of, you know, 25, then they went back to a school that was really small, they're in classes of 8 to 13, and they hated it. They said, Dad, it stinks, like, there's only a few other girls in my class. Or the choice, the choice make friends is very limited, because there's no, not a lot of kids, right? So I liked it better when there were more kids, but I had more choices to have friends. I could play with someone else at recess, or if, you know, there was drama, there was a way to get away from it, because there's other kids to play with. And so, you know, those are some other like kind of social benefits that, you know, also have to think about. But also, you know, Morris doesn't exist in isolation, right? So these kids eventually come down here to the high school. And the high school gets funny, because we don't have now like a junior class of, you know, three sections of excellent kids anymore. Now, you know, they're walking a high school schedule, and so the classes are very small at the high school. But we also want to make sure that we have enough kids feeding the high school, so we can offer the courses that we offer at Lennox, which for a small school, I would suggest we punch way above our weight by being able to offer a host of honors and AP courses, athletic opportunities, the arts and music that many schools of our size would never be able to offer. And so those are good things, and having a stable idea of how many students we roughly want to have allows us also plan for that, purchase for that, and allocate resources wisely. When we think about also adding children, you know, historically, sometimes there's some real natural entry points. Kindergarten, sixth grade tend to be big ones, and then sometimes also ninth grade, if kids are coming to us from another area, then it'd be a different configuration. What's problematic about holding until those entry points is that we're getting kids that didn't have access to Lennox academics coming up to us, didn't have access to the expectations of what it means to be a Lennox student. And so for overall culture building, you know, those kids sometimes aren't as good a fit as kids who come all the way through our program, and we know what they've learned in the past. So we don't have to spend as much time trying to fill gaps or figure out what kids had or didn't have if they came from other schools. Now, all of that being said, you know, we've looked at the numbers and tried to make the best decisions coming into the school year. And I want to put together this chart here, and it just so that when you're looking at it, it's a little bit confusing. Because we're looking at our, every year in schools, we have an official count that the state and the federal government look at on October 1st, right? And so that's, you know, the official count, and that's how we count schools year over year. So this chart looks at where we were at the last official count last fall, where we are today. This is year over year, and you'll see this number behavior, saying, well, that doesn't make sense. We're learning from 19 to 22, that's actually a difference of three, how come I see two here? Well, that's because that's looking at this cohort who's in kindergarten, who now is in first grade. We picked up two students as they moved diagonally. So that's looking at the cohort. So just, I know it's a little confusing when you first see this chart. So this chart does demonstrate the number of students that we added over last year for each of the grade levels. One of the things that's particularly interesting for us is we had a huge uptick in kindergarten resident students. We have a consulting group that does these studies, and they told us that that's probably going to happen, and it was spot on. We had, you know, a bumper crop of kindergarteners come in that were residents. So that, that's a positive development. We also traditionally see many choice students coming to kindergarten. This year we had 20, but it's unusual to have 24, you know, choice students in some of our historic years. So that's kind of a snapshot of what the differences look like between two years. One of the things that certainly jumps out off the page, I'm looking at this particular array of data, is that we went from 275 overall to 317. And that's to get closer to those optimal numbers. We also had like an uptick of some kids who came back to us, we lost during COVID. And so, and then one other big caveat is that there are also students who choiced in last year after this deadline, because we had a school committee meeting around that time. We talked about enrollment, and the committee said, hey, it looks like we're a little light on enrollment, maybe we should allow some more choice kids in if there's choice kids on the waiting lists. So we did do that last year, but that happened after that 10-1 official count, and so those kids are not selected here, because they were added after that. So they would be caught up in this new look at our overall data. So we have more kids, but some of them also did join us last year. So it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing I think that's important and instructive to think about is historically, what has Morris looked like? And so we have pre-K over here all the way up through fifth grade, and we have an analysis that runs from the 03, 04 school year all the way up through last school year, and, oh, actually, the current school year. And one of the things that jumps out again in the data is, right here, we have a depression in our numbers over our historical norms. And that's attributed to COVID. We had kids that either left us and went elsewhere, or kids that didn't choice in during those COVID years. And so we saw a reduction in the number of students that we served. And so it does feel, wow, it feels like we jumped up, you know, from where we, we used to be, or what feels normal to me. But when you look back historically, in most of our grades, we're pretty close to a lot of our historical norms. And as we look at enrollment for the current year, our largest class, so to speak, is fourth grade, where we would have 60 children, so we have three sections of 20, which again is not unusual in comparison to some of our historical trends in the district. And again, is, you know, maybe slightly larger than, you know, 16 to 18, but that's our, our largest grade level. This is spot on with our optimal level. But you can still see that most of our classes are below what the strategic plan determined as our optimal level. Even the school overall, without counting in the preschool kids, so K to 5, is at 317, which is well underneath the optimal level of 342, where it was determined that Morris would probably work best as an educational institution. Same is true at the secondary level, where it's 444, which is less than the 475 that was previously prescribed. So that's kind of a snapshot. I don't know if there's other comments or questions from the committee, you know, how we want to have this discussion, but I just wanted to give kind of a global overview of where we are, where we've been. The way the process works is also kind of interesting. And so we get these students to apply every year, and then we have a lottery. And we choose students, or we rank students after that lottery in a priority ranking, and we just draw them at random. We put them in these little plastic eggs, we draw the eggs out, and we film it, just so in case anyone ever, you know, wants to say they didn't do it. You know, we were stacking the debt and someone's favor, or whatever. And then we look at where we have those openings, and then we go through that rank order and start to apply children. One thing that's also interesting is that we have 18 students over the last two years who have applied to come to Lennox, who are also children of our employees. And so, you know, not, it's not all of our choice kids, but, you know, there is a healthy number of choice kids who also enter into that application process, they get no special treatment or preferential treatment, you know. So some of our teachers unfortunately end up maybe at the bottom end of that lottery, and that's just the way that it is. They don't get anything that allows them to jump it. And it's not even something we could offer as a contract item to maybe entice people, because choice law actually says expressly that you cannot do that. So no preferential treatment. But we did have 18 students over the last two years of our own employees want to join us here in the district. So that's kind of an overall snapshot. And now, you know, open up for discussion.
I, I do have a question, because it came up in some letters, and then up to some parents here who kind of wasted. Was this concern, and, and I think you kind of addressed it when you said this idea of optimal and how do kids learn and everything, but someone raised, I don't remember who did, someone raised a concern about additional support staff. And I will say, anecdotally, from talking to people in other districts, we actually have, I think, I don't think too many, but I think a pretty good amount of staff that are set up as paraprofessionals, that come in as paraprofessionals or a special education to meet the needs of students, depending upon the need. And that fluctuates from year to year based upon what the needs of the students are that we have. But I guess the question that was raised was an assumption that if there's higher class sizes, that we need more paraprofessional staff. Can you address that? I think you kind of did, but maybe.
I do.
Give a little more on that.
Before we jump into Q and A, can I just add one more?
Yeah.
Point on the data, if you can put back to the Morris tab.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we've sort of answered directly the question folks had about kind of what has happened. And so if you guys just take a look at this top table here in orange, you've got the enrollment in the resident last year, October 1st versus today, and then choice last year, October 1st versus today. And so the total difference is you've got resident enrollment going from 162 up to 173. And then you have choice going up from 113 to 144. And so if you add those together, the total size of Morris has gone up from 275 to 317. So it's, it's a solid sort of 12 to 15% increase. And I think what a lot of parents are feeling in particular is if you look in those third and fourth grade rows over on the right, you'll see basically nine choice kids were added to each of the second moving into third and third moving into fourth. And so, you know, I think as Dr. Goslin was saying, you know, 60 to 20 in each cohort might be kind of what we've had conceptually. What, what you are feeling that is not an illusion is that three to four additional kids were added per section, driven primarily by those increases in, in choice with the goal of getting up to that level. And so I think there are some particular cohorts that are feeling that. And then the one other thing that, that I found notable as I looked at the data is the 113 up to 144 is just not how we have historically added choice. So the, the 31 that, and to Mark's point, some of it may have been during the year last year, but the kind of start of year to start of year increase, I believe is more than the, the total increase we'd had over the prior decade. And so, you know, I think to a lot, a lot of the points that, that Mark made, there are a lot of good reasons to think, you know, 20 kids in a section is actually a really good number to have. But in terms of sort of, why does it feel differently than it usually does? It's, those are kind of, I think, the numbers that, that, that a lot of folks are noticing.
Somebody raised the question too, in one of the letters that I looked at, you know, or saying that we were going to push each class up to 60 in the upper grades and 54. And that's not really the plan, you know, we, we're still using our guideline of 50% mid-grade and and 40 overall, we're a little higher at Morris than we are at the high school, but overall, it actually works out to just around 40%. But, but no, we, we would not be just pushing up to 60 just to get to 60. We also always looked at each, I mean, each year, when we have to make the decision what grades have choice open, it's, you know, consultations with the principals to say, you know, because there may be something unique about the grade, maybe special needs to say, you know, because there may be something unique about the grade, maybe special needs, um, that the grade has that, that, you know, we as a committee wouldn't know, but the principals do. And so superintendent in the consultation with the principal says, okay, this grade's open, this grade isn't open, you know, for whatever reason, we have to, and those things, we have to let the state know what grades are gonna have students open in.
Yeah, I mean, looking at this from my own, you know, education, as far as an educator, um, you know, I would say that Morris still has, um, small class sizes, um, in comparison to many elementary schools. Um, and we also have, I think, um, a high level of support, which is also very fortunate, right? And, um, I think Brenda's done a wonderful job, um, advocating for those supports. And so we have two school adjustment counselors, for example, uh, at Morris. Um, that's a tremendous, um, value in having two school adjustment councils in a school of Morris's size. Um, many other places you may have a school adjustment counselor who shared between multiple elementary schools. Um, and so, you know, I think that that's fantastic that we have that as a, as a support. Um, you know, we have a fantastic, um, team that meets every single week to look at, um, the changing needs in student population. They look at data, they look at, um, behaviors. They look at, um, attendance and, you know, make plans to support kids who need extra help, um, whether that's additional opportunities for learning, whether that's a targeted intervention, uh, in a particular subject area, um, or additional supports for, um, social emotional wellness. And so, um, you know, I think Morris has a nice job of, um, of supporting the students that they have and educating the students they have, um, you know, the, the website niche.com just put out their twenty twenty-three rankings, and Morris is ranked as the number two elementary school in all of Berkshire County, um, just right behind Williams Elementary up in, um, Mount Baylock. And so Morris is still, you know, doing an amazing job educating our students, um, and I think we have all the reason to believe that that's going to continue well into the future, um, and again, I'm open to having conversations, maybe this is something that can be discussed at the buildings with, um, their school councils. Um, um, and also like was it, was said, we do work, you know, closely with, with principals, um, to make sure that we're right sizing schools, um, and again, sufficiently large that kids get a great school experience, but not, you know, so large that, um, students feel unknown or aren't getting the, the support or services that they need. Um, and so that's generally our approach is to kind of, there's a lot of moving parts as you try to figure out how many choice kids to, to accept, you know, the, the grade level itself and the makeup of that grade level. Um, how many, you know, students we have that are residents, um, what's the overall configuration of that grade, uh, in terms of numbers? And then also, if we make the choice to, um, accept students from outside of the district, um, what does that do to those ratios, both in the classroom level, um, and also the overall ratio to the school level? And so, um, you know, we put a lot of thought into that and trying to balance those things.
But we totally understand that it doesn't feel the same when you have a class of thirteen, and now it's all of a sudden a class of sixteen. I mean, it, we, we understand that, um, and, and a- as Dr. Goslin mentioned, some of these kids, that thirty-one increase from October one to now, some of those students came in last year, and I, I have no idea what those numbers look like. Um, but it, but it does show a thirty-one uh, increase in school choice from last year to this year, and as well as what, eleven, eleven new students, uh, Lennox students, which we, we've been hoping that that thirty-five in kindergarten, it used to be fifty-five every year, sixty-five, now it's fif- now it's thirty-five, and this is a big year. It was twenty-five for quite a few years, um.
And under twenty.
Under twenty-one, yeah. So we're thrilled.
It was a doom and gloom saying. Nobody's here, yeah.
But it's, um, you know, back in these days that are early on this chart, that those three years on the right where it's thirty-eight, three eighty-nine, three eighty-three, the three years that we had those really large classes, we only had three choice kids. Those, those were eighty-five Lennox stu- Lennox kids those years. Um, and we actually stopped taking choice in other grades because we were afraid that the other grades were gonna have this, you know, I think it was Gulf War babies in that class, and that was the only grade that grew. Everybody else, the next biggest class was sixty. So that class had eighty-eight, and the next biggest was sixty, and that, and those grades never changed. So for whatever reason, um, but we've had, as you can see on this chart, there are many years that we had over fifty kids in that one or another grade, um, as kind of the routine. Some of it was choice, um, and, but in the early years, not as much choice, so. But anybody else wish to?
And I don't know, I mean, Brenda, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, uh, is there anything else that, you know, you feel would help inform the conversation around Morris and the, and the size of Morris this year versus last year, and whether you see it in from the pencil's advantage?
Um, sorry to come on that. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I am going to my first school council meeting, so I will certainly take this up with my school council. And this first year is on that, so we certainly, and last year during our school council meeting, we did discuss in a way the ways to increase it. Um, so we will, we will continue these discussions there.
I guess for the folks who had commented initially, we had a formal mid-session public comment, but we'd be good to know if, if that answers questions or if there are other questions.
I, I guess it answers some of my questions, but I also feel like going back to something from like saying that we were in the three hundred and eighties or whatever, back in two thousand and one and two, after coming off a pandemic, where we have kids like all over the place. And in Lennox, we had three teachers that were trying to teach remotely for a year and a half. And then kids are coming in from other places that, you know, they were in a different place. I guess my concern is, I don't want to see them get lost. Like Lennox is a beautiful community, it's a beautiful space, the teachers are amazing, they're all people that want to be there. They stay there, and I don't want to lose that. And so I just, that is my concern as a parent. My daughter's in first grade, I have a son that will be coming up also. And I just don't want to see that go. And I think part of what the community is between the community, the teachers, all of that make Lennox, Lennox so great, and it makes people want to be part of that. But I don't want to lose that.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I guess, where I'm coming from as a parent. So I guess percents and numbers like don't always jive, and I was trying to figure out where other numbers came from because I was basically looking at my daughter's yearbook to try to decipher certain things, uh, from last year to see where we were at and where kids came from. And I guess this has been a complete learning experience for me of understanding how all of this works. Um, and it is great, there's more Lennox families, and I'm not invincible choice in any way. I think it adds quite a bit to our community, but I just don't want to see what we have getting lost if we're adding too much, especially coming off the pandemic where we don't, you know, I know last year the benchmarks of what I'm guessing some of the information was off of the teachers' teaching and all of that. I know my daughter was basically online, and I know a lot of people, their kids were below. So that was my concern this year when I saw the huge number jump of just being concerned that these kids are gonna get lost in a shop.
Yeah, and, and another, another parent in one of the letters had raised that same concern that they'd heard that the benchmark numbers were, were down in some cases, and again, that's stuff that the principal will be looking at with the teachers and, and, and also, you know, and working on, on, so.
We certainly want to meet the needs of the kids, right? We don't want them to get lost, um. But we were on a call yesterday with the superintendents and, um, folks at the Department of, of Elementary and Secondary Education, VESI, and, um, they're looking at, you know, the new release of, um, related round of MCAS data, and, um, you know, we saw overall in the state, a, a decline in MCAS data, um, especially at the elementary level, particularly in reading, um, and when I look at the overall state numbers, um, you know, some, it's kind of shocking in some sense of what their proficiency levels were. And so, um, you know, thankfully Morris is significantly better than, than that. But, you know, again, we don't want to lose any ground for our kids either, right?
Right.
So, you know, we're very sensitive to that, um, you know, and I think that the team there has done an amazing job, um, so that the slides that we see across the state are not the ones that we're seeing in Morris, um, you know, and we want to make sure that we have all the resources and support to continue that. Um, I know that Brenda's, um, working with her staff right now and talking about, um, PBIS program, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Again, that's another, um, approach to, um, organizing schools that helps to support the needs of all learners, um, in the classroom, but then also their, um, the needs for their behavior and emotional wellness as well. So, um, you know, there are good things in place, and Brenda continues to, you know, innovate and add new things all the time. Uh, Brenda brought, you know, a very robust benchmarking system to Morris, uh, where one previously, previously hadn't existed. So, you know, we're very grateful for, you know, her commitment to looking at data and making sure that kids get those interventions and that, you know, it's not just kind of a random assignment anymore, but really it's something, a really good idea of needs help and giving them that, those services right away, rather than a, a way to fail model, um, which, you know, is easy for schools to fall into if you don't have that system in place.
I guess that was part of my concern with the numbers getting higher, that it's, you know, it's just harder for the teacher to make sure that she's seeing everything that she needs, her needs to see. Um, that, I guess that's where.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a good, good point, right? The referrals work two ways. So one, it's classroom teachers saying, hey, I think there's a problem right here. Um, and then also the data, right? So looking at that benchmark data, you know, we can go through and say, you know, this group of kids really stand out in the data, let's talk about what's going on with these students, right? And so, um, that helps to add another level so that, um, no kid can slip through the cracks. That we're certainly looking at, you know, teachers as the first level of knowing what's happening in the classroom, the needs of those kids are, and being able to refer kids for extra help, but then also looking at the data to make sure that, you know, even the kids who weren't recommended, um, you know, are entered into that discussion if they need some extra help or support.
Um, just a question, you mentioned that we're at optimal now, more or less, in a few of the grades at Morris?
Yeah, just, yeah, just two of them.
Right, but I know then also siblings are allowed as if like choice family were to come in, then all the siblings. So are, are you, is, are you done with choice for the school year?
The, the deadline for choices has come and gone, so.
Okay, so last year, I'm thinking of a family I know who I think entered in November. Does that?
Right, so last year was unique, right? And, and I don't know if it came across, you know, um, but I did say that last year at one of our school committee meetings, after looking at the October one information, um, the suggestion from the committee was to take a look at adding additional students, um, because numbers were low. And so that's where you may have seen children that entered last year, um, that were kind of, for lack of a term, off cycle, right? Um, and then those kids are, and also then, as we said earlier, pulled into this year's count because they also joined us after that October first snapshot.
So there, so no more, unless a family moves to Lennox, it's, the class sizes are staying as they are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, the sibling question, a sibling can come in if only there's room in the grade. It's not automatic. You, siblings have priority. If, all things considered, if you had room in the grade and you had a sibling who now applied, but, um.
So with, with twenty being like the cap, let's say for grades three, four, and five, does that mean that is twenty, is it the cap? So that means there wouldn't technically be room for choice, but, but kids, obviously, if somebody moved there.
Yeah, if somebody moved to town, there'd be a spot, but we would not, those wouldn't be that grade, fourth grade, sixty kids wouldn't be a grade we'd be adding choice to.
Oh, and typically we wouldn't, so that, those larger class cohorts as they move up, then you get to middle school, and then the numbers in the, and the, and the ideal, the optimal ideal, which again, is just kind of looking at numbers and, but taking a lot of data and a lot of information about how schools work and how kids perform, et cetera. Um, you know, those would, would be looked at as less likely to have any room. But remember, we're not trying to tie the hands of the superintendent if there was a situation where a family member wanted to come in, you know, when you talk about caps and things, you're trying to create some hard and fast thing, and we're not doing that because it really is looking at each school year and each situation. But as they come into the middle school, then we look at being more available because the kids break up into smaller classes, they move around. It definitely impacts other things that happen as the kids get older, social, socially, sports-wise, activities. You know, when we talk about how is it you create an optimal school, like when we were doing the data last time, there was like a seventy-page report of people who really dug into the data, that is not the thing I can do. So just want to avoid people getting caught, that, well, you went over one and now they're capped, and just don't want to get into that kind of thing.
I just think we're trying to understand.
No.
The numbers.
Yeah, and it's just really important in the sense that generally speaking, and we've seen this over the years, when you have a large cohort, there's, there's less room for adding any kids. And so if, if your family is like, okay, my younger, the younger sibling is in one of those large cohorts, you might be thinking, for a choice family, you might be thinking, uh, our child might not get in, and we got to figure out what we want to do, or, or we just adjust to where we are. Um, and then if you have the smaller ones, there's some sense, but each year, the decision gets made. It's not made in a, like, we're gonna decide now what's gonna happen three years from now. Every year it's different, and we have families that move out, right? And we did have a situation of families who enrolled their kids in other schools or homeschooled them and then brought them back in.
Right.
And that, I don't think typically happens. You're either going to another district or you're not. And so there's a few situations where that happens, but it's, it's rare.
Thank you, Ronnie. I appreciate that. I don't know, I just want to point out that there are some people in the chat that have been waiting very patiently. I don't know if you guys have noticed that.
And I think one other thing that, I don't know if it's captioned this data or not, Amy, um, we also lost, uh, was it ten students to?
They've been removed.
Okay, all right. Yeah, sorry, we had ten students as of today were on our rolls, but they were not really attending our school because they had you know, transitioned to somewhere else, but that new receiving district hadn't requested the right paperwork. And so we legally can unenroll them until we get those requests, um, and I think they were all at the high school level, so.
Yes.
The guesses they probably was at Taconic for the, um, newly, um, offered programs at Taconic, which are, um, focusing more on, um, on technology, um, than the trade.
Yeah, we have, uh, Susannah Keith, who would like to talk, so Susannah, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, I just wanted to make a comment that, um, there've been a lot of, there's a lot of talk about numbers and number crunching, but there, I haven't heard a lot about what the student body looks like. And I, as a parent and as an educator, I want to remind you the importance of looking at the needs of the student body. It's easy to say we are at a lower number than the state or what the state says is an average. I find it hard to believe that twenty-six is the average number for an elementary school across the state of Massachusetts. And I also want to point out that there is extensive research that supports the idea, that supports, um, small class size. I think if you ask any teacher, they will say the importance of small class size, um, to them, you know, especially in the elementary grades, the younger a student, the more important it is to have individual attention. And, um, I think that the kindergarten significantly increased its numbers this year. I, I think it went up by fourteen, if I remember from the chart between last fall and this fall. Um, that's significant across three, across three classes. And also, um, the student body has changed significantly in recent years since Bob Vaughn was principal. There are several English language learners that were not part of the student body in the past. You have several students that come from a different educational system, that some, some come in from Montessori, which takes time to kind of teach them reading and writing the way that, that we teach it at Morris and in, you know, kind of public education. Um, also, since the pandemic, you have a tremendous amount of lost instructional time across the board in all age levels. Um, and also many of the students in kindergarten and first grade today had no opportunity for preschool because there was such limited enrollment. It had to be full-time or nothing, and some schools only allowed, I think it was like five to seven kids. Um, that was very limited. And so we are seeing a lot of students whose literacy is below what you might expect for an elementary student. And I just think that it's important. I, I'm a parent of two Lennox school students. I have taught in the school before, and I recently returned as a Title One Interventionist. And though I'm new at this position, I, I do see some changes over time. And it's, I, I just want to reiterate that it's important to look at the reality of who these students are, not just numbers. Thank you.
That was really awesome.
So I, I do just want to point out that the principals can have input and say that this particular class has maybe students, maybe we don't need to get or we, we need less or no school choice added in this grade. So that is taken into consideration.
Yeah.
Principals have input.
Anything more on this conversation?
I, I think I'd just only add that if this, um, the school councils or this, or the, you know, the community of Morris wants to have more. wants to have more conversations, I think we could. I do think that as, Dr. Goslin pointed out and, um, you know, Brenda Kelly pointed out is that they're, they're working on assessing what the kid, the, the needs of the students are. We're now in sort of, year two of coming back. And so I just want to just encourage everybody to not, not, I mean, we're parents, we worry, right? But, know that there's a lot of people working and if, and if your student is really struggling and you want to have some more personal interventions or, I mean, conversations, I know that, one of the wonderful things about our community in Morris is that there are people that really want to meet with you and talk about it and say, how can we help your child? So, I know people get like, oh my God, this means my whole child's experience is going to change or there's going to be, and I, I really want us to all recognize that we've done, you know, and we're really responsive and, community is one of the things that, that shows through in our, and, and as you've already mentioned, in our, in our school and.
Yeah. And the committee is all about, student, students. What's best for students. Okay. Moving on to the agenda. You guys want to stay fine if you're all set? Public meeting, you're welcome to stay. Okay. Um, so then moving back to examination of community culture, this is something that Christine had, had asked to put on and in light of, you know, some of our other meetings.
And if you want to.
Sure. I can, I can start. Yeah. I, it occurred to me that this was a, a topic that's worth discussion, discussing. It's, it's about the committee itself. It's about, uh, the way that, you know, we sort of approach, being on a committee, how we approach our responsibilities. And honestly, it's, it's, it's come through to me, um, that I'm not sure. I think it's worth asking the question if, if we all feel like we are actually working towards the same goal. Um, and to me that says a lot about, um, you know, maybe, the culture of the committee, what it is, ways that it could be, um, it could be perceived. Um, you know, maybe ways that things could be done differently. Um, and, and I think, really saying, you know, I have my own thoughts. I'm one of seven committee members, about what the, what the, the, the reason, um, is that we are all here, that we, put so much, so much time into this public service, very, very important and critical public service assignment. But, um, I, and I ask that as an honest question. I don't know if, I don't know if we've had this conversation around, you know, what, what is actually the North Star? That, that we are aiming towards. And if we are all aligned around that, you know, once we sort of settle that, how do we sort of, go about it? What do we do culturally? Um, you know, what are, what are sort of the norms? I think in, in my experience, you know, I'm going to just share my, um, some, some personal observations. I, I think this committee has a lot of potential, to be a very high performing committee as a, as a body, meaning not as, a group of individuals, but as a, but, but as, as people who actually come together with, with a shared common goal. But I don't know that we're actually achieving that. Um, in, in the recent, I don't know, the recent past. Um, and I, I, I wish that we could. I, I think the composition of the committee suggests that we actually could, you know, that we could be very, high performing. But to me, that would be a difference from where we are today in terms of actually, yeah, really saying, um, this is how we lead as a, as a, as a governing body of, of the Lennox Public School District. This is how we think about, you know, the example that we set for, uh, for the district, for the, for the faculty, the staff, the students. Um, and I just, I'm not sure that these are things that we have, we've necessarily talked about until we haven't all come together around them. So with that, um, you know, I, I think to, to me, it's really starts and ends with the students, right? I think we're here to provide the best, possible education to every student in our district, whoever they are and whatever, you know, whatever that means to that student that we possibly can. I, I don't, I don't know that there's really any other reason for us to, um, to come together. Now, we may disagree about how tactically how to achieve that. And I think that's okay. I think constructive, criticism is this certainly helps them and healthy and makes us stronger. But, um, I, 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 I don't know. Maybe I'll stop with that and see if anyone else has thoughts around, you know, sort of, goals. And then as a follow on how we, how we achieve the goals or, you know, what, what we might think about as a group.
I'll, I'll chime in if you don't mind. Um, so to me, our number one goal is continuously improving, in all of the areas that we're responsible for, right? There's no end date in that. You can always improve. It's a, it's a journey, not, you know? Um, I'll go back to Orin's point earlier this evening about having attorney's metaphor on the screen. And I, I kind of have wished that we had, used that as an opportunity to kind of look at how we could have done things better. And maybe she would have said you couldn't have. I don't know. I, I'm not the attorney. Um, but I think we need more of that and less, you know, just the seven, eight of us in a room, um, kind of talking about the same things. It would be nice to hear from an outside party how we could be doing better. And I don't know if everyone is as open to that as I would like them to be. We also are very strong. There's a lot of strong opinions in this committee, which is great. You know, it'd be so boring if we were all the same. Um, but I do wonder if there is a desire to want to learn how to do better and taking constructive criticism. Uh, that could have been a really good opportunity from Sarah, I think.
Should, do you think it would be Sarah or somebody from M A S C that we should be?
I don't think it matters.
M A S C is probably cheaper.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah.
But. Well, one thing that's interesting is just about the issue of the attorney being present is that, every district has a different way that they deal with attorneys. And I've certainly heard feedback from a lot of others that, their attorneys are actually typically regularly present at meetings. At some point, I think it was in my prior tenure as a school committee member, that we stopped having that. We had a very different attorney at the time. At the time I was not, particularly grateful for the attorney's advice that we got. It was not helpful to situations. So, you know, that's, that's, I'm not saying that that should or should not happen, but certainly access to Sarah to be able to answer questions, when legal issues come up, I think is helpful. And that was something I've advocated for. Um, I'm not sure, you know, if people have their ideas about whether more attorneys are a good thing or a bad thing. And I've, been on every side of that argument. But, um, on that point, I think, having more information from our group, I think it'd be helpful to know. And that was why, I was hopeful that we would get sort of like, here's the framework of what you have to do. But then, there's the rubber meets the road of how do we do the job better, which is what you're saying. And I, I agree with that. Um, I am a fan of, I, I'm not a fan of conferences for just conferences sake, because I've been to M A S C conferences in the past that have been very, in my opinion, kind of wonky and desy and regulation heavy. And the last one that I went to last year was much more substantive and really talking about, a lot of the kinds of issues that come before here about how do we make, great schools. And the one I, last one I went to, I guess it was last year. I don't COVID. I'm, I'm, yeah, last year. And I'm going in November. Um, and I don't know if anybody else has ever decided to go. Um, we've had different levels of involvement, but I'm going this year. And I looked at the agenda. It looks like there's a lot of robust stuff, but we can also, decide to engage in some leadership training. What's interesting to me is we're, we're all from different disciplines. Um, Orin and I both happened to both gone to law school, but we have very different experiences, I think. And leadership, I, I've been doing a lot of training about leadership and it's, it's something that I was just listening to a podcast before I came here and I was like, how do you lead? And in different contexts, you do it in different ways. And, one of the things I think was a good hallmark is a meeting like tonight where we're having a lot of open and transparent conversation, even within our disagreement and that we're speaking with each other in a way, which I think we always have, even when we've had difficult times, but with respect, um, and the ability to hear different points of view. So on the good, I think it's really good when we express our points of view without, animus, but certainly clear about what we think. Um, I don't like when we shut down debate, or when we, you know, shut other people's points of view out and hoping that we're not really doing that. But the concept of how we lead, I think I would love to have more, conversation and even training around because leadership means different things to different people and in different contexts, right? And certainly in the crisis of COVID, the need for leadership really came in with having to make some very difficult decisions. Again, with lots of different points of view. And I was not on the committee then, just as we were beginning to, yes, I was on the committee for part of it last year, but the beginning parts where nobody knew what was happening, I think, I know it was really challenging. So.
So Megan. You know, doing a little introspection, um, are, are there certain areas that sort of stand out to you where you feel that, hey, we could, you know, you know, ob- obviously, you know, we've had a lot of feedback about communication and whatnot. And, and I think we've all taken that to heart. And, uh, are there, are there other areas that, um?
Yeah. I mean, I, I look at this entire past year pretty much. I, I mean, take your pick on, uh, which, issues have, have arise. But I think, you know, especially for the, the newer committee members, right? This is like, what a year to start on a school committee. Like, I swear we're going to be the most experienced group this year so far. But, um, I, I think, nobody can anticipate issues like we've encountered, right? Um, they're unlike other issues that might arise over the years. And this was kind of like new territory, I think for a lot of us. And so understanding, um, you know, what, I, I really don't like talking, like saying what we're allowed to say and what we're not allowed to say, um, like the sound of it. But from a legal perspective, like that's, why I appreciated Orin's comment about, I wish Sarah had kind of come on and said, actually, you could have gone, you know, this other way with this. And this is something that you definitely couldn't have done, but you could have done it this way. Um, and just kind of get our minds thinking in different directions rather than we're so, no, the attorney says, you know, advising not to say it, so we're not going to say it. And that leads to frustration within our entire group. So I think just having somebody, I'm not an attorney, um, but having an outside person kind of look at what we're all talking about and reining us back in, uh, would be helpful about any of the issues that came up over the last year. That makes sense.
Yeah. All right. I'll jump in here for a minute if I could. Um, can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I certainly agree with the notion that we can always make the district better. I think one thing that's really important to keep in mind that everybody on the committee is a volunteer, who's serving out of the sense of civic duty and a sense to make change. Um, we have made more change in the last year in the district than has happened in like eight years. It may not, it may not have been as controlled as we like, but we have basically overhauled our entire administrative structure. Um, that has in some way been, progress. Um, I think it actually is very good progress. We're now able to, make some changes and hopefully get a leadership team that's, that's willing to hear new ideas and make new changes. And I, and I sense that. I think Dr. Goslin really, really has some ideas. I think, um, you know, Dave Pugh up in high school is, is going to do wonderful. And I think if we can get a principal in place that is rock solid, we can do great things. Um, I think Brenda has been terrific, terrific down at Morris. Um, we weathered, you know, a global pandemic. And yeah, maybe we didn't get through it as perfectly as everybody would like, but we got through it. And so we just need to be careful. And I actually, I can't wait to talk to Christine sometime about like where she feels we're falling short. Um, because, everybody puts a lot of effort in. And, it's, it's admirable and appreciated. So thanks, everybody.
I think that is, that is very nicely said, Bob. I, I don't, I don't know if I would say we're falling short. I mean, I think, I, I think what's coming through, we haven't heard from everyone, yet. But I, I think what's coming through is there are some common themes, right? Is, you know, we're, we're, we're here. Um, like I said, for the, for the students, for the education of our student body and the continuous improvement, I think, so like we can all line up around that, right? And suppo- and support that. So to me, it's about, how we do that. And, and it's a lot around how we do it together and not antagonizing each other, not working against each other internally. Cause that's, I, if, if, if there's a place where I, I think maybe the, you know, committee could, could do things differently. It's, it's the, it's the sharpness. It's the destructive, sort of aspects to it that I don't think, serve. I think we could have the same goal and tactically achieve it in a way, um, which, which is much, much less sharp. So, so that, and that's sort of what I, what I was saying around culture. Um, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's something about like all rowing together in the same direction, which I don't, I don't often feel that we, are doing. I'm not saying we should do that all the time. Like, like, you know, I want to allow room for differences of opinion. Like I said, we, we, if, if we all were sort of parroting the same opinion all the time, that wouldn't be good either, right? We should see things differently. We should build from our differences. Um, and, and challenge ourselves and, and challenge our positions and say, is this really right? Is, is somebody else looking at this, even if, if it's a way that I find kind of uncomfortable, maybe they're seeing it, better. And I need to, you know, sort of accept that. That's, that's totally valid. But I, I just, I think there are ways to do it that help us. Some of it comes down, it's, it's a little hard to articulate, but it, it comes down to the leadership. Um, as, as a group itself where I, I, I think we could, I think we could shine a little more.
I think it's important to keep in mind too, that we, the seven of us have only been working together for how long?
This is our second year.
Year and a half. And so prior to that, there was very little turnover at the school committee, from what I understand. Um, and with that comes some growing pains. You know, you have to get to know each other's personalities and learn how to respect differences. Um, I think that's just natural. I think it would be kind of bizarre if we all just met each other and said, hey, we are all identical and think this along the same lines. So I don't know if that maybe has something to do with it, but I guess I don't see us really.
Yeah.
It's a bigger issue.
I think it's, I think that's a good point. And then, um, you know, there's, there's this whole group norming thing of, well, I can't remember all of them, but the, you know, the forming, storming, norming and.
Performing.
Performing. Oh, see, that's what I'm trying to say. We want to get to the performing stage and get past, the earlier stages.
One thing we could do in the mammoth M A, there is a, a committee self-evaluation tool in there. If you think that would be useful, I could pull that out and see people could fill it in and that might lead to some discussion points, some discussion areas that.
Yeah, that's it. And that's, that's a good thought. Have we ever evaluated the committee?
We had, the last time we did it, I think might've been the first year that I was in the committee. I can remember where we were at Cranwell. And, uh, Don Fitzgerald was there and he brought in Pat Carrera to talk to us. And we might've done, we might've done it at that point. I know that was a, an, an, an opportunity on his part to, kind of assess where things were and talk about the roles and responsibilities, stuff similar to what Sarah did tonight. You know, with that career, but I, we may have filled in that form at that time. I'm not absolutely sure. My memory's not infallible on that point. As it usually is on everything else, of course, but.
And I think I'm, I'm, I'll just say that I'm somewhat less enthusiastic about self-evaluation tools. I, I just think that they're a document, you fill them out and I just don't really, it's not a thing, you know, in my lifetime, my, my ability to self-evaluation was very different because you either have clients or you don't. You have a good reputation or you don't. You either, I never win cases because I was getting people divorced. So that was never good. Um, but you had different ways of looking at whether or not you were doing a good job. But I do also think that the culture, the question of culture building or, you know, Christine, you said, you know, ultimately if our goal is, the wellbeing and the best scenario for every student, you know, however they come to be, you're articulating your own goal. And, I don't know that we've ever had the conversation about whether that's what we all believe, you know? I, I mean, it seems like it makes sense that that's what we believe, right? The wellbeing of every student, but there are other, things packed into that. What does that really look like? You know, we had a whole robust conversation with a community that's worried about how many students do we have? And, what does that look like for a school? What kind of a school community are we? We've addressed issues this past year, being aware that, some people within our community aren't kind to one another. And so I think sometimes when we talk about culture building, it is about kind of, you know, we have, we have a mission, for example, we've got mission statements and things, all around this school. We as a cohort have never actually tackled that and thought about that. Now, mission statements, again, people have all kinds of mission statements that then they don't live up to because they don't actually follow their values. So, if there was a situ-, I feel like retreats sometimes as the opportunity to really, kind of you, you, you dig into it, whether it's with post-it notes on the wall or whatever. And you really talk about what are your most important values? And I am, trying to learn a lot of those leadership skills. It's something that I'm aspiring to. I feel like having someone who, who is a, a coach or a leadership coach or trainer, or whatever you want to call it, who is a facilitator who helps us to, think about that. And, you know, we did goal setting where we threw out lots of different ideas about goals. And I think we had some, debate and discussion. I think Orin, you know, you know, there was a debate about whether or not that was the right way to set goals. So, I think the conversation, maybe we just kind of keep it moving forward and we think about, retreat format or something, and whether we really want to dial into that. Because when we say something, for example, of making sure we have the best school districts. Making sure we have the best school districts as we can for all students. What does that really mean? Dial from that to what it really looks like and what we do. And that's a culture building exercise that I'm interested in. And and then I think in the end, we also have different ways of. Communicating our disagreement about something. And I think, even if we've gotten frustrated, we we do a really good job when you. Hear about in the news, or you read some of the newsletters from. You know, local newspapers, it typically comes up, you see some pretty. Horrible stuff of the way people talk to each other, and even within our, you know, open comment, people come, and even we've had some that have been ideal. We've been able to, you know, be civil and 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 caring in the way that we communicate with each other. Sometimes, you know. Robert Tools of Order is clunky, people don't always like that, but. There is a process, and I'd love to see us dig in a little more to what is our culture? What does it mean to be in Lennox Public Schools? Mark's talked about the idea of what does it mean to be a Lennox Public, what's the portrait of a graduate? That's like. The title of the exercise, but the underlying exercise is really looking and then say. A student graduates from Lennox, what does it really mean to them? What do they look back? What what skills did they get? What is their life like? And we haven't really done that. And maybe that's, maybe we're part of that whole. Exercise in talking about our school and we're an integral part of that. I don't know. Just a couple of thoughts I have.
I, two thoughts that I had from this, one is on the, I I think on the question kind of. Mission. I don't know how far we'll get. Trying to dig into that because I think. We all do, I think it's fairly clear, generally speaking, what. Goal of the school committee is in terms of. Making the the school district as good as it can be for the students. I, you know, we might have different nuances that. By or not. May or may not kind of end up being relevant for me. You know, the one thing I would. Tweet from the way Christine said it was. I think we have a a real obligation to think in the long term about LPS as an institution. And so the thing that. Might, you know, seem like the quick fix at the moment isn't necessary. Um, even the thing that thrives the most optimal experience for everyone tomorrow in the schools isn't necessarily the the right choice all the time, but but I suspect that. We don't actually disagree on that either. And so, you know, I think mostly. Where we disagree or find ourselves wrong in different directions, to the extent we have a different conception of. How schools do that. Um, and 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 what is a good school look like? Um. So I I think it could be productive to talk a little bit more. In those terms about, you know, whether it's educational philosophy or. Could be some portrait of the graduate. Um. But even more so. What we see, what we expect schools to be delivering to kids in a lot of cases. Um, and so if we were going to kind of try to get into the, you know, how do we think about things? I think that that would probably be where we find more disagreement. Um, but then the the second point, and and I really appreciate what Megan said about focusing on making things better. Is that. Right, the. There's a sociologist, Robert Nispit, who writes a lot about. The nature of community and one of the most, his his central point is that. People come together to do things and get things done, and you you can't have. You'd say, wouldn't it be nice to have a wonderful community? But if there's something they actually have to do, it's not going to work. And. To, when I have frustration with the committee, it tends to be around wondering that question of. What is it that we're here to do? I mean, we have from the beginning of the year, the list of, well, at every meeting, you know, at this meeting, we have to hear the budget. This meeting, we have to renew enrollment. They're kind of the turn the crank things. Um, but then there, I don't know that we've ever identified anything we actually. Care about and want to work on, in a sense. Um, and, you know, recognizing that we're not all going to get our first choice, there's nonetheless a consensus building exercise of saying. This is something we all agree we do want to work on. Now that then reaches, goes to Bob's point, which is, well, actually, working on something is a lot harder than just. Going through and and ticking off the boxes, but I I think to the extent that it can feel like, you know, whether we're disagreeing or squabbling or or things are getting sharp. It's because we have a lot of things to talk about. That don't necessarily connect directly to something that. We want to do. And so. As I think about how we could be more effective and 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 build on the culture. That's why I'd be most interested in is actually, and maybe we all bring three things and see what overlaps or whatever it is. It's related to the goal-setting process. Although I think the goal-setting process is more oriented toward kind of the day-to-day, what March be focused on. But ideally, for a a year-long term, we would have one or two things. That we actually want to. Do that means we're. People are going to have to do work on it, and we're going to solve, like, there's problem solving to be done. And if if we can find a couple of those things, I think it would it would be really powerful. Um. But but I think that's that that's the direction we'd have to go in, and and there are definitely trade-offs with with whether or not we want to take on that sort of thing.
That's well said, Orin, and and I think the key thing you said there is, can't be too many initiatives, right? We don't have a lot of bandwidth, so one or two is probably realistic.
You know, I think that's where I was trying to make a point, um, perhaps not so well about. Really goal-setting or goal-setting. If if there is something that the committee. Uh, can, uh, would be excited about, that wants to achieve during a a a year. We have, um. And then utilize our subcommittees. Uh. To do that. In in some way, and then and 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 report back, because how many times, you know, we have a subcommittee meeting, we're like, well, we're going to meet next Wednesday, or we, you know, we met. Last Thursday, and what'd you do? We talked about X, Y, and Z. But I think if if there were. Um. We can start to give, uh, understand. That. The committees, that the subcommittees can be a real resource that the that the, uh, school committee as a whole wants to pursue. Then then perhaps we will get that sense of. Of accomplishment and of moving forward and of achieving. Goals that that help not only reinforce the culture here. But in, but not only reinforce the school culture, uh, and and move it forward.
And and I I agree, I think, you know. Subcommittees do have the small to-dos, right? Each time, make decisions about things and follow up with things and. Um, but the larger goals, sometimes we don't get there. Um. One of the things that's interesting is two down from this, and I don't know how much more time we're going to meet tonight, what we're going to pass to the next meeting. Um, but the bullying audit, next next steps. And when I think about. The bullying audit and what the purpose of asking for and the results of it, and what we're looking to do is that within the documents, the summary and the recommendations. Are really, some of it is just strictly policy, but it's much. Stronger than that, because we already learned that we have a policy in place. And we were not, as a community, as a culture, following it. I think that's a fair assessment of what it says. And so what I look at is underneath that, if we were to talk about at another meeting or. Goal-setting to talk about next steps is. In any situation which that policy wasn't being followed, there was at least a harm or the perception of a harm. And then some situation that maybe was not, maybe it was resolved, maybe it was not as much of a harm as it was thought to be, and it was resolved on its own, but what came through the. Through the recommendations was that things were left unresolved. And so. If we looked at our community and our school as a culture and thought about, what does that tell us about the immediate changes we need to make? That might actually be the answer to some of what Orin and Christine are talking about is. What kind of a culture do we have? And? How do we engage with each other? How are we in community with each other? How do we disagree with each other in a way? And if we can. Work on that as a si- as a as LPS, as Lennox Public Schools. And also as our school committee, we've talked about like words matter, how we behave with one another matters. How we model for people matters. And that doesn't mean that we're always going to agree, and it doesn't mean we're always singing kumbaya. It really means we're trying to work through difficult things. Um, that are hard and sometimes can be, you know. For doing that as a school system and as a committee. Maybe that gives us a few things that we can break into as a as a primary goal, because. That ultimately impacts the well-being of our entire. Everyone, our employees, our staff, you know, all our employees, our students, our community, families, it it really has that rippling effect to everyone.
I don't know that we have to bring this any. Particular conclusion. I really just wanted to sort of introduce the topic and get some, yeah, some thoughts out. We. We'll keep talking about it.
Yeah, so, um, so here we are at eight o'clock. You've got.
Well, it's okay. That that has resolved itself. So I could stay even longer.
Let's hope positively. Um. Okay. Then. The, um. Vetting candidates, bullying her body, and then I just want to talk a little bit about these last two things. We'll hold off the goal setting, we'll. Set a separate meeting where we can, and. What Orin said about. Um, with with respect to the goal-setting, with, you know, some items being administrative and some items being. You know, kind of the school committee goals is 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 right, that. Our list of things. Is largely things for the superintendent's or administration to do or the schools to do. Um, and so to articulate, um. You know, committee goals. That are separate from things that. Would be, that would not really be in our purview, but that are. Not, um, the things that committee for the committee to do. Um. You know, and so we'll figure a time for that, you know, but. Let's talk a little bit about vetting candidates on. You know, why don't we set? Why don't we set eight thirty as our ending time, you know, and we'll talk about these two issues and then try to get some date set.
Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm afraid I'm going to have to drop my, uh, illness is getting the better of me here.
Okay.
Everybody good discussions.
Very honest of him to not just. Put it on mutant and.
Uh, what was it he said?
He's not feeling well.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, he said they. Yeah.
I hadn't read his email before, but I know.
Yeah, he's got some illness in the household, and he's. Stayed home, but he's not feeling well.
Okay, Mark, so. Yeah, we had put this on the agenda because. Um, you know, Mark had some ideas going forward about vetting candidates and and some things, and there might be some suggestions here. We don't have to. Belabor this, but Mark could ki- kind of talk a little bit about.
Sure, I think one of the. You know. Pieces of feedback that we got, um, and I think it just, it would be educational for the entire community is. Um, you know, one of the steps that we do to to vet candidates, right? Um, you know, and it's easy to. Read something and lead to conclusions about, you know, things that. You thought were missing that, you know, how can they not do these things? Um. And so I have to think a lot about that and say like, well, why would? People also even know like what our processes are, right? Um, you know, and so. Before you get to vetting candidates, you know. We talked about, how do we even go about hiring candidates, right? And so. Um, yeah, we have discussions about hosting jobs and and that goes up, uh, that builds a candidate pool. Um. For a hire like a a principal. Um, you know, I think the best approach is to, um, have a. Stakeholder, uh, committee, um, that has representatives from different stakeholder groups. Um, so certainly we want. Um, parents, we want community members, we want students. Um, we want faculty and staff, and we want members from our administrative team, um, to all share a role in that. And, um. Through the last candidate search, the last principal search, that's what we did. Um, that went through multiple rounds, that progressed from paper screening, um. Through multiple rounds of interviews, um, to planning for the the community presentation. Um, and then once we get past that, then we move into, okay, so what do we do? Do next? We getting ready to offer someone the job, right? And so at that point, um, before we would ever offer anyone the job. Um, we start to do background checks. Um, and so that means calling, uh, references that are listed, um, also reaching out to. Other folks in the the area that, um. Also have, you know. Connections and and know folks within the education circles and try to see, um, you know, what they know about potential candidate. Um, and then anyone who's listed as a a former employer, um, we've certainly contacted as well. Um. And the the this last case, the one employer where the problem seemed to lie, um, was not when it was listed, so we didn't have the. Mechanism to do that. Um, then after we contact those folks, um, then we ask, um. Our candidates for hire, uh, to, uh, participate in a query check, and that's a a criminal, um, database that. Uh, checks across, um, Massachusetts State Police and, uh, the FBI database to see if there are any. Um, historical convictions, um, that that have been findings to that candidate. Um, and. Then we move from that query, um, into. Trying to to. You know, have to let any last four rounds and then offer, um, position if everything comes back clean. Uh, I think that there's. I think something that we learned in this last process that we could. Add into our processes, possible enhancements. Um. I think one of those would be a question that I did ask of this candidate orally, but probably one that we should probably get in writing, and. Um. This, to me, is the way to. Sort of, um. Get at the things you can't always get at, right? Um, and so. If a candidate has never, um, had any finding, for example, they're not going to appear in any database. Um, and so. Be very difficult, um. Or probably possible to really find any of that information if there's, if it's not lodged anywhere and recorded anywhere. So, um. You know, one of the the best practices in. HR and in personnel is to, um. To ask, or I would suggest at this point, moving forward, to get a written statement, um, from the candidates. Um, when we ask them. Is there anything from your personal and professional, um, life, um, in the past? That would be an embarrassment to the district moving forward if it should come to light? I think that gives a very. Broad opportunity for someone, um. To disclose anything that that might happen, and it could be something small, it could be something large. Um. And, you know, at that point, you know, that would give us the ability, you know, if the candidate was honest and chose to disclose that, um. To say, you know, this probably isn't the right fit. Um. That also. You know. There's a risk obviously for the candidate, because. If they do share something, you know, you know, that we would have to follow up on with their current employer, you know, we would have that obligation to still do that, but. That's one step that we should certainly build into the process in a very explicit way. This time around. The candidate was posed that question orally. Um, and did he answer the question saying that there is nothing, um, you know, a background, um, it's impeccable, you can call. Anyone you want. So I think that in writing would give us, um, a little bit more of a leg to stand on should, um, we ever have an issue in the future. Um, we can point and say. Whether it was, you know, someone being dishonest or a mental reservation. Here's a written statement saying that, you know, there's nothing. Um, the other thing that. Coming from another state, um, we had to learn through, um. Some of the painful fallout of, um. The Jerry Sandusky case at at and state. Um. What the state of Pennsylvania started to require was, uh, they passed the state law after that, um. And said, yeah, when you're applying for a job working with kids, um, that the candidate has to disclose. Any place they've ever worked with kids ever. So, you know, I was a babysitter when I was fourteen, I worked as a camp counselor while I was on breaks from college. I was substitute teacher, you name it, anywhere we worked with kids, you know, I worked at GameStop, you know, um. You have to disclose that. And, um, then the. District, uh, who wants to hire that person, reaches out to all of those, um, people that that you recommended. Now, obviously, the drawback is. You know. Relying on people's honesty to share those data. So I think it gives us another one of those points where we can say, okay, we asked. The candidate intentionally misled us, right? Um, and so I think that gives us another, um, stopgap measure. Um, and so while Mass doesn't require that, I think that's a practice that I think we should probably, um, adopt again. I think Sarah was very clear in saying. You know. As an organization, we we have to always meet the minimum thresholds, but we can always add additional ones. And so these would be additional ones. The other thing that we could consider is, um. You know, and it's expensive, so I don't think we want to do this for every hire, but maybe for, um, you know, principals or, uh, superintendent, superintendents, uh, any central office position. Um, there are. Organizations out there that will do, um, detailed background searches, um, you know, and go back and. Do more deep investigations. Um, they would also look into, um, social media and those types of things. Um, now, again. We do Google, uh, searches on anyone that we're going to hire. Um. But, you know, there's, you know, people that have a little bit more expertise in being able to do a deeper search. Um, so that's something we could consider. Um, obviously, that comes with the cost. Um, but that would be another, you know, possible suggestion moving forward, but the the first two, you know, are cost-free, you know, other than. Just a little bit of time and effort on our part, but, um, you know. We may want to think about, you know, having been, for lack of a better. We may want to think about, you know, having been, for lack of a better term, burned this time around, I think, you know, we may want to think about. Engaging one of those companies to. You know, maybe on some of our, you know, high level hires, um, not to say that all of our hires on high level, but our administrative. Uh, positions, um. Doing that. An enhanced background check.
But I think it's, I I I think those are great ideas. I also want to sort of be aware of the um sort of crisis reaction.
Yeah.
Pendulum swing. And um, the idea that if if something uh a mistake happens or something slips or there cracks that, you know, like like there's this. Immediate tendency to wanna prevent it from ever happening and sometimes it can lead to an overreaction. So, and I think you were alluding to this and. It 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 really comes down to, so if there's additional. Layers of scrutiny or specialized background checks, I I don't like for I I want to believe that like for ninety nine percent of the candidates, we wouldn't, who are honest. People who are gonna disclose, it's overkill. So it's, I think it's just. Kind of a judgment call about, you know, how much do we want to spend and invest in something that is. Hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, not likely to.
Right, and and I think that's a decision that, you know, we'll have to certainly spend a little bit of time thinking on before we do that, and I don't want to be. Overly reactive, right? Um, you know, or. You know, feel like the uh or forced by panic and just some of the other things that now are gonna be. You know, more. Yeah, hassle than they're worth. Like one of the things I often lost my administrative mind is just short and squeeze, right? Just want to make sure that that's true. Um, I did the other thing, you know, to your point, you know, yes, Pennsylvania rushed to introduce that new level of, um, you know, background checking. And that's the best, but that still would not have even caught him. Right? So I think there is some truth to your statement in terms of. Also making sure that the. Response or solution, you know, moving forward is something that increases the likelihood. That it closes the door on that. To me, I think the single most powerful way is to get that statement in particular saying that, um. Yes, I'm willing to. You know. Sign this document saying that, you know. I'm affirming that there's nothing in my background that would embarrass me through the district. Um, it. Still not going to stop things, but I think it gives us another high. Point of leverage, you know, um, if we. Face a potential legal fallout from something like that in the future, um.
I do think the idea of asking where else you've worked with kids, um. As someone who hasn't been in the, I well, I have been in the I'm applying for a job situation in the last ten years, but. Or and and less than seven, but you know, when you talk to people about resumes and all this stuff, there's the whole like shorten it and change it and there's a whole different way of doing it and I'm. Just learning not, you know, but so that means you take off things, right? Um. I said to someone, I was a substitute teacher here and I had to be court like, oh, I never knew you were substitute teacher. I probably wouldn't put that on my resume. I was substitute teacher in Linux, but I was. And um, but I think that the idea of where else have you worked with kids and maybe making a clear like, even though it's not, is there anything that's not on your resume or application? In which you've had experience with children does give us that, like, oh, I worked at four different, you know. Camps or I worked at the same camp for ten years. That actually gives you some really good input about, wow, you know, Veronica Fenton worked at a camp every summer and it was with these kids and. You know, maybe there isn't, oh, yeah, the administrator's still there, we can call, it actually could be some really good information. But there's a lot of stuff in the whole employment world where you're just taking stuff off, not because you're trying to hide anything, but because it's. Supposed to be concise, blah, blah, blah. So I I like the idea of maybe just generally asking question or putting on our application or wherever we put it. Again. We use a lot of web-based services, um, maybe it's just a statement, where else have you worked with kids? Because I do think. Someone moving, you know, there are some behaviors that would be worth following up on when someone has worked with kids, and if they want to be. Elusive about that or lie about that, then there's the fact that there's actually been and I I we've asked the question, they've been dishonest. We didn't, you know, because I do think that, you know, people working in other states, there's other ways in which there's behaviors. Um, and we certainly have seen that in my past work in child protective work, um. People move around, things like that. So and I I'm not trying to be overreacted, but I think a statement like that. Um, added to your. Proactive statement about is there anything that would be embarrassing to you or to the district, I think would also give us an affirmative information. Because again, like. What's resume relevant is is a matter of opinion also.
Mm hmm. And the extra level of background checks, I mean, we're talking about a small number of people this would apply to or positions that it would apply to. So I would hope that cost didn't become the preventative, you know, issue, uh, because there's really no price tag you can put on protecting. Our kids and faculty and staff, uh, so I would be in favor of something like that.
And I mean, we can start to even, you know. Shop around and see what that might be, um, you know, my my brother is a. Now in police administration, but before he was in police work, he worked for the uh the USIS and they're a company that contracts to do background checks for the people applying to be. Police or um high level government clearance work, and so they do, you know, those enhanced background checks. There's other. Groups that do that, there's law firms that do it, so you know, we can kind of. You know, start to get even a sense of what that is. And like, I think you're right, I mean. How often are you gonna use it? You know, I think that. The return on investment is probably pretty big in terms of keeping kids safe.
Okay, um. Bullying on it next steps, and uh you obviously, we can discuss this further at our next meeting. Um, but just because it's important that we um articulate. What it is we're gonna do, uh, I mean, obviously. Well, what you're gonna do.
Well, I think it's. It 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 is both, that's what I'm gonna do, but it's also, you know, what the committee um is gonna do, because the the bullying report is your report, right? And so I do need to have. Some direction from the committee in terms of what do we want to do with this, right? Um. We had a meeting, um. We said that we got the results, um, they were kind of then quickly given over to um. The media who then released these things. In some way, I don't feel like we had maybe the. Degree of control or the pace of. You know, um. Sharing of information that. You know, if I could do. Not that I could do it over, but if we could do that again, you know, I. Maybe. Would have thought about staging that in slightly different ways. Um. I think in the in the near term, there's some. Education and some conversation that has to happen with families, um, I think at each school level. Um, so maybe having a community conversation, um, talking about. You know, what the report is, why it was done, what we learned, what we'll do moving forward. Um. You know, and I would suggest that just, you know. Extemporaneously thinking at this moment, you know, maybe a a night at or two at at Morris. Um, meeting for middle school parents and one for um. High school parents, um, and then also ones for faculty and staff. There's some. Significant concern amongst faculty and staff, um. And learning more, understanding more, um. You know, also concerns that, you know, there were um. Some complaints made against staff and and some of the recommendations are to. You know, digging around that. And so, um. You know, I think they want to also have an opportunity to. Talk about this, understand this, um, and learn, you know. What happens moving forward. In terms of the actual. Report and the suggestions in and of itself, um. I think. The person that that strikes me, and it's not explicitly shared by um the investigator, but that. Strikes me is that. We could be far more transparent and make. Learning about bullying and reporting bullying far more easy, right? And so how do we do that? I think one of the easiest ways is to um. Dedicate a tab on our website to bullying, um, that has. Background information, it has our our policy posted, it has specific master and all that applies to bullying, um. Maybe some, you know, best practices for educators or for parents, um, and then. And one of the findings that. Kind of like is repetitive or suggestions, it's kind of repetitive in a sense. Reduce the barriers. To recording, um, you know, in some instances, you know, the. Finding was, well, you know, it wasn't. Investigated and we can't say whether that was right or wrong because it does say it's supposed to have this, you know. Document called form, blah, 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 that like, it appeared that it filled out the official form. And. The, and I think this is a a great finding in our course to say like, doesn't matter if you did the. Official form or not, like if you're having a problem, you want the problem solved, right? And. I also think that. Sometimes the problem, you know, people don't know if it's bullying or not, they feel like something's going on with my child, so how can we also? Make it even easier for folks. And so one of the ideas we kind of workshopped around at an admin meeting last week was um. Having some kind of universal complaint form, um, that allows people to say, this is who I am, I'm a. Student, I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, um, I'm gonna be anonymous, um, if they want to keep it anonymous. Um, here's what I've witnessed, I'm experiencing, you know, here's who it involves. Um, so now that can be used for student to student bullying, be used for staff. Student bullying, it's staff to staff bullying, you know, and so it gives us a little bit more flexibility with that. It also allows us, um, the option to say. That form can also be used to. You know, digging around whether it's a. Single specific disciplinary issue that needs to be addressed, um, whether it's harassment and more often than not. You know, these kinds of interactions don't rise to the. You know, uh, master of law definition of of bullying, our own po- policy definition bullying. And it's more harassment because harassment actually has a lower um bar to be able to say like this is harassing behavior. Um. So that form will allow us to capture that, call it. Whatever it is. And respond to. I think the biggest thing is we need to know. How can I quickly learn about this? How can we get resolution? So I I think we want to put that universal complaint form.
Sure.
On our website.
But and and the the universal complaint form to. Making it as simple as possible, meaning not having the the form itself become a barrier because you're asking for two hundred different.
Yes.
Fields and.
Right, right. We want it to be quick, we want it to be easy, you know, we don't want it to be so onerous that people say, oh, it's too much of a burden, right? Then we defeat the whole purpose. Um. And the nice thing about that, if we use like a Google form, is that that builds, you know, especially in the backend, and so then we can also log. You know, the complaints that were made, not also dig in. And learn what we didn't know, I think, previous to um this. We heard a lot of. Speculation, we've heard, you know, anecdotes about complaints over the years, um. But in a lot of cases, they never filtered up. And so, you know, I'm. Tasked with trying to figure out, how can? I try to see what was unseeable before, and I think that again, having, you know, now a form where I can see how many of these were were logged or not. Um, allows us. To learn about, you know, um, how to improve outreach efforts or if there's. Discrepancies between, you know, certain populations that are reporting or not reporting schools and then that kind of thing. Um, and then also having an internal form when our administrators start to do a bullying investigation. That has the steps that they're supposed to follow, uh, and that they go to document that and that's also collected in a digital format. So that I have access to go and see, yes, these things are being followed up on and here's the tangible proofs. Um, and here's where it is and that that whatever state. So. Parents have already been notified, um, you know, investigation has started, I've collected statements. Um, you know, there's an education component to this for our our administrators. Now, we did training with them at our last admin meeting. Um, elementary just has it on their agenda to then do a turnaround training with their their teachers. Um, but it's really important to me to demystify the process, really able to have. You know, more insight, yes. The law says it's the principal's job, but I need a way as the principal supervisor to know whether or not the principal is doing that job, and I think that in the past, it was very easy. Um. To keep a lot of that off the radar, and so I want to make sure that we have greater on train to. That. Um. So. Those are some of the, you know, immediate actions. Um, I think the. Other side of this is a lot of the report. This is where I feel I fall short, focuses on what we do after the fact. Um, and so, you know, here's the. We already had a policy and it's a pretty good one, it can be. Modified and tweaked, I think, but at the same time, um, we have to follow our own policy. So, but. A lot of it was more about. You know, are we doing investigations? Are we, you know, making sure the kids are being held accountable and that those things are important too? But I want to focus on additionally, what are we doing to prevent that in the first place, right? So like a perfect world would be that, you know, we don't have any instances. Um, down the reels and that will always have some of these, but. Um, I also want to say, you know, how are we building on? The great foundation of second step that kids are getting on Morris, um, with really active anti-bullying education here at LMHS. Um, that again sets the educates our students on this, but then all and and gives them ideas about, you know, what bullying is and how. You know, how which you should do if you see it, um, what are the ways to um combat it? But then also, um, how do we foster a climate where that's just not something that's what we do? We talked about this a little bit earlier in the profile, like graduate, but you know. What does it mean to be a Linux student? What does it mean to be part of this community and culture here at the school? Um, so that we can say like. You know, that's not what we do and be very, you know. Active in saying that, you know, that's not acceptable here and, you know, um. We will not tolerate those things, uh, and this is a place where everyone should feel welcome and accepted. Regardless of your your race, your gender, your sexual orientation, um, and so that we're very clear that this is a welcoming place for all kids to to come and feel safe. Um, and I know that it's possible because I've. Been involved with a very large high school that served over four thousand kids and, you know, they had a strong culture there where it was not. Popular to. You know. Shame people or make them feel bad about anything. And so, uh, I think we can do a better job on the front end of. Really building that culture, um, and I know that our administrative staff was very, um. Eager to do that, um, you know, even as a um. A substitute principal, you know, Tim Lee was very eager to dig and run that work already, so. Um, you know, I I think there has to be a little bit of that work on the on. Making it easier to report, making it easier to learn about bullying, um. Communicating with families, you know, um, in very clear ways about the process that which our policy already um says that we're supposed to do. But then also focusing on that front end in terms of how do we uh prevent this in the first place and how do we we change the culture to one where, um. You know, you don't have to fit a certain mood mood or stereotype to be able to. Um, you know, be part of the in crowd or, you know, um, but rather than we have a place where every kid feels. Welcome.
I think what's so important about a lot of that curriculum and it requires the work, right, of working with the kids, particularly in middle school is. You know, there's a lot of things happening with them and they're changing and adolescence and all that kind of stuff, but. We, if you build in tools and exercises and how to co- do conflict resolution and how to communicate with one another and how to. Solve it, I think there's a lot of ways too that sometimes families. Don't want to report something until it gets really bad because they're trying to like, well, let's let the kids work it out, or they don't want to over micromanage, or some parents that do over micromanage, and you're like. And there isn't really a place, and maybe it's a community education of parents to having a couple of like evening workshops about. You know, your kid comes home and they're crying because somebody called them fat and now. What do we do about that? And where do they go? And maybe we give some really a lot more. You know, conversations about it, and then when you do call someone or let someone know at school this is happening. You know, what is gonna happen once I've called someone? Because that's the other thing is that then, you know, you don't want, a lot of people don't want their child to be. Socially excluded or that or the kids have been friends in the past and now they're not. Agreeing, we don't really know why, you know, um, I once had a parent call me and say. My son had been excluding her son, and I think there were a lot of things to it that could have done better. And then one of the things my son said was, well, he's involved in drugs. Now, I don't know if that was true or not. But the reality was like, oh, okay, well, you're isolating him for a reason, you know, and maybe it was really a a a shout out, an opportunity to. But I think the parents also need that. You suddenly go with like, the kids have always gotten along. And now suddenly my child comes home and cries every day. They don't know where to go with that either. So if we build into that some community conversations as well. And then also with the anonymous ability is that sometimes you see trends, right? Gee, the kids all seem to be saying, you know, somebody's being called fat all the time, and maybe somebody doesn't want to report, but they're like, I keep hearing it here in the hallway. Now we have this ability to track more anonymous stuff and you see the trend. Okay, we got some fat shaming going on. I'm just using that as an example because. It is something that happens, it's very, very painful and. Hard for kids and leads to a lot of other things, um. But, you know, people don't always want to report it because it's embarrassing or it's, you know, whatever. Um, so I I like it, I like all of that. I think it's. It's it's the right direction. And then the other question I had about the community forums, because it goes to issues, it kind of. How many of us are present or how we're present, but is how can we, you know, be part of that? Maybe we break up into twos and. Go to some of the different community forums so that we're present and. People see that it's something that we want to work pro. I mean, not just that they see it, but they are, we are actually working proactively.
Yeah, and I think that's really important. I think again. And the conversation being up to um engaging in doing these in the first place, you know, one of the. Comments was that, you know, this has been happening for years and it has to stop. And so I think. The committee, you know, owning that, yeah, we. You know, thought this was the time to to do this and that this is our report, you know, and so we're part of this process, I think, you know, would be a nice show. Um. Other things that are already in. Happening right now, just so that again, people understand the whole uh picture here is, um. Dave and um, since Dave Pugh, the assistant principal and Tim Levy, um, sub. Dave and um, since Dave Pugh, the assistant principal, and Tim Lee, the um substitute principal, um. Are leading grade level meetings, um, with all the grades here as well, to um, talk about. Bullying and and how to be an upstander and those types of things too, so, um. That's also very important to have those conversations with the kids, and so I'm glad to hear that administration was. Um, so willing to to jump right in and, you know, bring um the classes together, um, to have that conversation. Um, again, the more that we talk about this, um, the more. We have the opportunity to, I think, push back and say, you know, this is not something that you just kind of turn the other way, like, then. We see it, we're gonna address it, um, you know, and. That's an important step forward to to that's already in place, um, the other. Dimensions of this was there was some complaints that folks thought that some of our faculty and staff maybe weren't always treating kids in ways that, um. Were optimal, and so, um, that's another, um, chance for us to reaffirm with our faculty and staff what the expectations are. Um, and that we are here for all students, their goal is to to teach to all learners, um, and to uh support all learners. To hold them accountable for the uh the code of conduct, um, hold them accountable to, um, you know. Whatever the rules are for teams when they're representing us, um, in athletics or somewhere else, uh field trips, um, and that. You know, they understand what the expectation is, and then where to go when they need extra support, um, you know, with. You know, challenging behavior or something to that effect too, um, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, our. Our teachers kind of feel that, oh, we're, we've been targeted as, you know. Not being good to the kids, and again, I I would say that. The very narrow number of folks who, um, those complaints have been made against, and again, there's still complaints, so we had to investigate them. Um, and and find out the whole picture, um, but also setting very clear tone for, you know, this is our expectation for. Working with children, um, talking to to students in ways that are um encouraging and and positive and supportive, um. And I think we need to be very clear about what the professional culture and climate is for, um, for all folks in in school, whether that's teachers. There were complaints about past administrators and their interactions with children, so again, we want to make sure that those things are. Are being shared with all, that, you know, if you work in this school in any capacity. You're a substitute teacher, you're a higher professional, you're an administrator, here's our professional expectations, uh, you're a visitor, you know, that, no matter who they are, the kids. Feel that, you know, they can come to school, they feel free from harassment from anybody, um, while they're here.
Um, just uh in terms of kind of, I guess this falls squarely under things the committee should do. Um, but it also takes me back to when we were discussing commissioning the audit in the first place, and in my mind. The important thing was that we actually. Establish some oversight and deadlines and make sure that things happen this time that have not happened before. Um, and I think, you know, already. I I know there were different conversations about how the bullying report should initially have been released, you know, I I think it would have been important. For something to go out to the full community, um, I think even at this point, probably the vast majority of people. Have heard that there was a report that said Lennox. Does a bad job when that Lennox has a bullying problem, that's probably, that's probably the extent of your median family's awareness, and so, um. I I think within, you know, the next few days, certainly by the beginning of next week, we should still have a goal. Of 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 a message from from mark out to the community that kind of, you know. First of all, it says a lot of things you didn't say here, but that like. Over many people heard, um. And then also sort of commits to a couple of clear, um, next steps, and and I think in my mind too, that would make sense is one. At our next regular meeting, which I think is October twelve.
Eleven, eleventh, I think.
Eleven plus, um. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I think it'd be helpful, Mark, if you can come back at that point with. Sort of some things that you want to be held accountable for, that, you know, by by December, we'll have, you know, we'll have that forming, we'll have. Chosen any sort of curriculum, whatever it is, and obviously, it's not everything has to be done, but some set of things. Um, that we can then also put on the agenda for the first meeting in December, let's. Review, um.
Can I ask you a follow up question? So, um, and I think it's a splendid idea, so thank you for sharing that, but, um. Because you own the report, um. I need some directions, I certainly want to share a statement that we want to um distribute to everybody, um. The the findings report and the recommendations, um, what's the. I don't want to share your report without your blessing to share your report.
Yeah, I think it needs to go out under our signature. Because it was our report.
I was actually thinking it should more come from the school committee than the superintendent.
Yeah.
And then.
Or a joint statement.
Yeah, yeah, or a joint statement, right.
What are you talking talking about the? You'll recommend, what what are we telling? So I I feel in some way that like. I don't know, the cat was out of the bag, you know, before you had an opportunity here, because. It went to the media, published this this thing, but like, it would have been great to share it with parents, you still have parents asking for it, so. But you own it, so I want to make sure that, you know, it's done in a way that we feel is the right way to to put this out there. Um, maybe with, you know, some joint statement, um, you know. That the committee supplied one, I supply one, or whatever, but, you know, I I want people to have this, but. I don't feel like there'd be appropriate for me to share or for you own, you know, without having. A direction to do so, or, you know, without having the opportunity for us to collaborate on how we want that to be rolled out, um. I don't. I feel like you really got a chance to roll on, I feel like it was just kind of unrolled.
Well, I mean, I. I I feel like there was a plan for how we were going to roll it out, Bob was going to have a statement when it came out, I thought. We followed up an email from you on action plan. Um, obviously, there was an awful lot of stuff going on right then, so we're we're playing catch up a little bit now, but. We did have control over that process and, um, something additional could, you know, if we want to. Distribute the report itself under our signature, that's fine, um. I think probably what's most important is. The sort of. Here here's what we're going to do with it, which, um.
Yeah, I'll I'll write something and work with Mark on. On getting that.
Yeah, yeah, we work with technology, you get that part of the website built, um, I mean. Maybe even easier if you just still Google site with all that, just have a link through some of our website, you know, but I'll work with Randy on that piece, um. But, and then, this is nice when you get the action plan that. What we're saying is going to be available, you can then go to and find, and these things are available, it's not just some hypothetical, some data, something will be there kind of thing, so. Uh, yeah. But that shouldn't be a heavy difficulty most things to the run.
And if the community forums. Aren't scheduled yet, we should, with a reference to community forums, but if they are, that should be included as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to delay anything, I don't think.
Yeah, I feel strongly that step one should be to catch up on what should have happened several weeks ago, which is something out to the community, even if. All it says is, and here's our plan, you know, we are now going to start doing other things, and I think our next meeting would be the time, which would be good to. Um. To to make sure we have a firm plan of action that we can then all hold ourselves accountable for.
One of those things about how can we do it better, that we're talking about about, like, doing a written statement, you know. You you could write a draft, but if we all have input, then we're suddenly, you know, we're we're editing or whatever, which we're not supposed to do, which. That feels really unwieldy, I feel like we need, maybe that's a conversation another time for Sarah, but like, waiting until the next meeting, you know, I think that's. No excuse for the fact that we didn't get a statement out, but that's a little bit how we got tripped up in it, is that we're not supposed to collaborate on a document and then say, yeah, I agree. That's what, that's what we want to say and have that ready to go, you know.
And that's part of the reason I think it makes sense for it to come from Mark, because Mark can like do that and can in fact ask all of our input on what it should say. Um, so I, yeah, um.
And that's ultimately what we had said, yeah, anyway, that's a good effort, I think we're on the same page.
But yeah, so I think if, uh, just pragmatically, I think it probably makes sense to to ask Mark to drive the process of getting this out. For the next couple of weeks, um, ideally something initially very soon, and then, um. Have on the agenda for the next meeting, okay, what the actual, what is the plan of the next couple of months? I mean, it all revolves around his responsibilities. Yeah. Um, and Mark, to to the extent that, you know, we want to have something from Bob to sort of present the findings themselves, that. And that can be part of it as well.
I mean, from what I've worked with people, that's the part of people who are most eager is to actually get their. Their hands and their eyes on on that, you know, they they just want to see what it says, they want to see what the recommendations are, um. You know, and so I want to be able to get that out to folks.
Okay, um, I had a couple more things, you know, here, that I just needed to alert the committee to and get some input from Christine on the first one. The policy reviews from MASC work. Those policies have been coming in. They're ready.
They have started, so we have two, we've received two segments. So, um, Amy and I sat down at some point. And from our policy book, we sort of, we divided up all the sections, these are the major sections, there are assorted other documents that. That we're we're going to start with this, so we have sections A through L, these are big picture sections, so like, A for examples, foundations and basic commitments. B is board governance and operations, so those two. Have been received back from MASC and are ready for review, and what seemed to make sense was that we, um, Amy and I, in discussion. Made assignments to subcommittees that we thought were the were the most appropriate for first review. Of the um, the changes from MASC, so essentially, we're ready to launch, um. And I can put this. My, you know, hand handwritten thing into the form to to send out, but the all the subcommittees, um.
But how much stuff have we actually received then?
We've only, we only have stuff for gu- governance and leadership, we only have two.
So.
We, yes, so at our next meeting, which we need to schedule, um, I was thinking I could include. If Liz is, Liz Lafon is available, she's happy to join and talk through the process, but we can, we can. She, I assume we can share, I can share.
Oh, yeah.
Time, and then we can review and just start to discuss.
Yeah.
And then we'll just march through the rest over the course of hopefully the school year, and I'll be going out to the other subcommittees. Yeah, so it's on track, we just need to. Engage.
My wife was wondering where I was, she came down to pick me up.
Okay.
Still waiting.
Okay.
Um. Okay, so, so ultimately, each subcommittee will have. Yeah, we're.
Will respect their respective.
Governance and leadership is already to go, but.
There's nothing else back yet.
And there, as you know from our policy book, if you've seen the actual hard copy, it's like this thick, so there'll be a lot of. Reading ahead at at some point, but it it will be reflective of the work that MASC has done. Viewing our policies, bringing them up to date, um, and so on. Um, so then the other thing is that finance and governance. Need to set dates to meet, and we typically, it's the four of us, um, you're on one, and you're on one, and Christine and I are on both, um. And, you know, I thought in terms of. At least the finance, we need to get, we need to get moving, because, uh, some of our decision making. Uh, will affect the budget process, um.
Yeah, do you want to try to coordinate the dates?
Yeah, so I mean, I was actually wondering if there was a date next week that would work. I don't know.
I may work schedule maybe, but I can write down.
Do you want to do that here, or do you want to do that? Yeah, we're allowed to discuss.
Yeah, scheduling is okay.
No offense, I don't.
It's the four of us, it's the four of us, so we can, you know, we'll work that out, um.
Yeah, people have to check this out.
Talk to you just in case, right?
Oh, my gosh, are you sure?
We don't have a regular committee.
Scheduling to our hearts, can't that?
Yeah, so, so we'll see if about getting a meeting for next week, possibly.
Can't be on Wednesday, because I'm going to the pumpkin show.
It drives me in the next one's there, I mean.
We have what?
I think everybody's waiting. Can we, can we adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we.
And it's not debatable.
Exactly. Who made the motion?
And I seconded.
Second.
And Meg is right with me.